Okay, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and start our regular city council meeting for August the 19th, 2019. And would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez, here. Councilmember Hamrick, here. Councilmember Hockes, here. Councilmember Meisner, here. Councilmember Turner, here. Mayor Pro Tem Smith, here. Mayor Trotman, here.
Would you all join me in pleasurable allegiance's flag? Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, welcome. A nice crowd. Must be something interesting tonight, huh? Okay. If you would like to talk to council on an issue, would you please fill out a form at the back there? They look about like this, and they'll be handed to me. I will call those that they're not attached to our agenda. If it's an agenda item, then we will wait till that agenda item comes up, and then I'll call your name. But I see in the audience the mayor of Victor. Welcome. Right here, right in the front row. So, welcome. How was your trip down?
Actually, I have per day. I have to go back out on my seat.
Oh, good. We could use your tax dollars, so thanks for coming. So, I have several people here, none of which are attached to, I think, anything on the Why don't we go ahead and do that right now? We have Mr. George Turner. Would you like to approach the podium and give us your name and your address, if you Would you start timer, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is George Turner. Live at 1514 Vine Street here in Canyon City. I served on this city council for four years, and following which I served as the Canyon City's mayor for six years. I operated the city's video equipment as a volunteer, telecasting city council meetings for over 10 years. I don't recall ever missing a meeting during that time. Then, one day, the city administrator, Steve Robbie, called me to say, "We won't be needing you anymore." He gave me no explanation, just that I wouldn't be needed anymore. I was replaced by a paid city employee. At the time, I was the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce in dealing with a few very hostile board members who stayed in contact with the administrator. I had to believe that the move to replace me was political. I served on the planning commission for over 23 years, a majority of that time as the commission's chair. The chair at that time was elected by the members of the commission. Mary Ann Brenner was the planning and zoning officer and had convinced the city council that when a commissioner's term was expired, that commissioner must make a written application to the city council stating why he or she was qualified to serve another term and to submit to an interview by the council. In July of 2007, I was again the chair of the commission, and my term had expired, so I made application to serve another term and was invited to the interview. I was voted off the commission by a committee composed of a minority of that city council following that interview and replaced by a gentleman with no previous planning experience. The deciding vote was cast by your city councilman Frank Hockes. I had openly supported Mr. Hockes's opponent in the previous election. Again, the action was obviously political. I have recently received four certified letters from Atkins North America Incorporated in Denver, the company which has apparently been retained by the city to perform preliminary land surveys, including recovery of and measurements to horizontal and vertical survey marks, topographic survey, which includes the modeling of ground terrain, and the measuring and mapping of physical features, and the placement of temporary survey stakes. There was no explanation of why this is necessary, only that it is project number 913-4. So, I called Adam Lancaster, who told me they were a consultant hired by the city to develop a design for stormwater improvements along Rhodes Avenue and Fraser Avenue. The form I was given gave no options. It is only a permission to enter my property, which I have not signed. The last time I recall, the city council was proposing stormwater improvements. They were proposing a stormwater drainage channel 300 feet wide from my north property boundary to the south boundary, effectively destroying my property. Thank God, it has never been accomplished. There's an existing large storm drainage pipe under Fraser Avenue from Coontz Avenue to the river. With this background, tell me why I should permit any agent of the city to enter my property? I have given many years of service to the city and have received little bit insult in return. Now, the city wants my cooperation. Really?
Okay. Thank you, George. Would anybody from council like to respond?
Well, Adam's here. Adam, can you give further explanation of the project that's been being done? Now, I'm assuming that's coming from our $8 million that we secured for funding for stormwater, and the projects that were selected to be done was actually done by Stormwater Task Force Committee that was pretty much independent of city council. We did have some council members participate on it, but we also had probably eight or more. The actual committee is on the city's website that were selected as community members, and we asked and pleaded for community members who were interested in stormwater to come and be a part of this, and they helped us decide the projects that we were gonna choose and prioritize. And one of those projects was at Rhodes in East Main, because it's one of the worst places with flooding, consistent flooding from storms, and especially at the Humane Society, and in those neighbors going down to the river. And so, our goal was to have improved stormwater to go with the railroads and the Highway 50, and cooperating with the county. Also, has committed $200,000 on that project collaboratively, so that it could be a benefit to the citizens as a whole. It certainly wasn't ever directed at a certain person, and certainly wasn't a political move against anybody personally. And, Adam, maybe you can give some more explanation about the nature of the project itself? And hopefully, I gave correct information. If I didn't, if you could help correct me, Adam, on that.
Okay. I would prefer not to stretch this out too long. So, what are you seeking, George? What are you seeking, or what would you?
I'm just telling you, I've refused to sign that permission slip.
Okay.
I wanted you to know why.
Well, so noted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Okay. Let's move on to... There's a group of people who wanted to talk about what?
He needs to turn it off.
Oh, sorry. We have four people wanting to discuss, I believe, a parking lot near the hospital. I would then call Julie Dean to come on up, and her name. Give your name and address, please. We would each give you three minutes, so try not to go over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good evening. I am Julie Dean. I reside at 1414 Fairview Place, and I am a co-captain of the Fairview Area Neighborhood Watch. Our group is one of many watch groups organized by the Canyon City Police Department to provide neighbors with a way of sharing and addressing local concerns and improving their neighborhoods and safety. The Fairview Area Neighborhood Watch represents 21-member families between 15th Street and Sheridan Avenue, just south of the drainage ditch that separates our residential neighborhood from the St. Thomas Moore Hospital campus. One of several concerns that our watch group is working on is a recently established parking lot just north of the properties on Fairview Avenue between 14th and the Sheridan Manor Apartments. The owners of the Sheridan Manor Apartments own the formerly vacant lot. Recently, this lot has been developed for parking and leased to St. Thomas Moore Hospital and has been posted with signs explaining that it's for the use of hospital employees only. It has the capacity to park over 60 cars and is used from early morning hours until late at night. The lot has been graded and gravelled, streetlights with surveillance cameras have been installed, and a pedestrian stairway with a bridge has been built over the ditch at the end of 14th Street, so that employees can walk to the new medical offices building. This has resulted in a tremendous change for the residents on Fairview Avenue and 14th Street, with many consequences for our residents. And all of this work was completed with no effort to contact, inform, or consult the stakeholders most impacted by this development, the neighbors of this residential area. Our association brought our concerns to the attention of the city planning department earlier this month, and they investigated the situation. A letter enumerating six areas of non-compliance in the construction of this lot was sent July 31st to Rick L. Pyle, R.P.E.L.L.C., and the owner's response is due within 30 days of receipt. Why is this a concern to our neighborhood? Four association members who live in properties directly impacted by the lot are here to give their perspectives on that question. Steve Starica, Jill Crew, Annette Ortega, and Shirley Squire, Ph.D., who is also our Neighborhood Watch co-captain. Steve Starica?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We moved to 802 Sheridan Avenue in 2007, at the end of basically a dead-end street, a quiet neighborhood, which should have very little to no traffic. And in the time we have lived there, the traffic has increased significantly. Sheridan Avenue at one time was a parking lot for the hospital, both sides of the street, which is a narrow street, which makes for traffic problems. The hospital, when I addressed the hospital, they did try to remedy the parking by advising their employees that they could not park there. It kinda worked, kinda did not work. And I don't remember the exact date. It's been a couple of years ago. They took part of this lot that they made a parking lot into now for probably 20 cars, which is right out my bedroom window, from anywhere from 2, 3 o'clock in the morning till midnight, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. There's cars, there's people having conversations, there's people playing music, there's people idling their cars while they warm up. And according to your... The letter that was sent out to us, this lot now is in six different violations. It was never brought to the city's attention for... The hospital claims they went through the state. It was never brought to the city. My request to the city council, if this lot is indeed in six violations, this lot should be closed until the lot is brought up to code or abandoned. It is my understanding that the property is not zoned to have a parking lot, which should be the end of it. Jill?
Our home is at 804 North 14th Street and has been in our family for 37 years. When my parents moved to Canyon City, they enjoyed the sheltered area... Excuse me. Area of this neighborhood, and I would often come and visit them from Chicago. They bequest their house to us, and when we moved in, the neighborhood remained quite the same, with our home on a dead-end street with little traffic. Three years ago, my husband and I created a front patio which we could sit in our front yard and enjoy the quiet and look out at distant trees. Several months ago, with no warning, the open area across the street from us was developed into the parking lot. Our view from the patio and out of our front bedroom window changed from an open landscape to staring out at a parking lot full of cars. Suddenly, our quiet little neighborhood has been changed into an area where there's significant car and foot traffic. The parking lot creates dust and trash, which is stirred up by the movement of the cars, and this dust blows onto our property. We are all experiencing the changes directly, yet none of us were consulted before the plans were made and executed. I believe that we, as a neighborhood, have the right to remain a residential community, free from the significant changes brought about by St. Thomas Moore Hospital, opening a parking lot for employees outside of their campus. Annette, our new neighbor, will talk to you next.
Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Annette Ortega, and I just purchased the property at 900 North 14th Street in June. I do wanna say that my biggest concern is... Well, the biggest draw there was the quiet and the peacefulness of the neighborhood. They just installed the walking bridge. They completed that after I purchased the home, and it does have safety and peace and quiet repercussions. The path that was constructed for the hospital employees from 14th to 15th Street is not just being utilized by hospital employees. It's attracting people who think that it's a recreational walking trail. And that walking trail goes past the residents that go along that ditch, myself included, and we're making eye contact with perfect strangers looking right into our backyards and our homes. To me, this is an invasion of privacy, and it's unwanted, and it's also unsettling. The ditch is an irrigation ditch and is not intended for recreational purposes. Another concern that I have is that the... It is my understanding that you're not to build within a floodplain, and if you look on the GIS map, it does show part of that to be in a floodplain where the walking path was constructed. That brings along flooding concerns for the area because of the change that they made to that wall there, or constructing the wall. Let's see. The new medical office building that was constructed should have been... Parking should have been addressed in that for hospital employees. I don't understand why there was another parking lot built when that should have been addressed when the new building was placed there. Let's see. The neighbor closest to the ditch did put his home up for sale directly related to these issues and the fact that he has no privacy from the hospital or from the public using that path. The construction of the new building, no doubt, did include a plan for adequate parking for the hospital grounds. The off-site development is taking away from the peace and privacy we have as a right... We, as property owners, have a right to expect that peace and quiet in the residential neighborhood. We do support the hospital as a valuable asset for our whole community, but we firmly agree that no residential neighborhood should have to be folded into the hospital campus by default. We do feel the impact of the parking lot and walking trail in our neighborhood is unacceptable. And now Shirley will speak.
Excuse me. My name is Dr. Shirley Squire, and, excuse me. My husband and I live at 1379 Fairview Avenue here in Canyon City. Our lot is located on the corner of 14th and Fairview. We would like you to note that we are very supportive of St. Thomas Moore Hospital and all they do for the community. However, we should also note that the Fairview Avenue area is not part of the hospital campus, nor do we want to be part of the campus. We strongly believe that this type of encroachment of employees' vehicles, increased pedestrian traffic, noise, dust, and privacy intrusions continue property... Excuse me. And privacy intrusions continue profit... If they continue, property values will be negatively affected, and our quality of life in the area will continue to decline. This matter was recently brought to the attention of Ashley Smith, Mayor Pro Tem, and Frank Hockes, our District 1 representative. Counselor Smith immediately contacted Canyon City staff to inquire about the issue. As a result, Patrick Mulready, city planner, and Adam Lancaster, city engineer, both came out to the area, took measurements, and then composed and sent a letter to the property owner, contact person, Mr. Rick Pyle. They informed him that the parking lot was in violation of several sections of the Canyon City Municipal Code. They requested a site plan approval for the parking lot layout, surfacing material, and striping plan, among other things. We clearly want to thank our city council members and the city staff for immediate support and action regarding this issue. At this point, we realize that Mr. Pyle has only until the end of the month to comply with this request. However, we wanna make sure that our position is quite clear. We agree with the city that the parking lot is not in compliance on a number of important issues. The most important is that the site plan was not presented or approved. Since the parking lot is out of compliance in numerous instances, as documented, we are encouraging the city to close down the lot until a plan is presented. A public hearing as part of that process takes place before any consideration for approval is given. Giving the owner an extension on this timeline, letting the owner address some of the issues, a Band-Aid-style approach is totally unacceptable. It implies that the city will be issuing a permit in the future without the input of the people affected in our area or the approval of city council. In conclusion, we appreciate the fact that we can address city council. We ask you to continue to pursue this issue, and please follow our guidelines and your guidelines, and please close this parking lot down unless they actually meet the requirements of our municipal code. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hockes?
Yeah, Mayor, Council. When Dr. Squire gave me a phone call, well, I received two phone calls. I was unable to get a hold of her cohort, but I did get a hold of her, and she was telling me about it. I was kinda in the dark when they was telling me about a parking lot and all this other stuff, because I'm familiar with the area. So, I said, "I will meet you at the location, so we can see what you're talking about." And I did. I did meet her, and her husband were there, and she showed me what the concerns were. So, I told her at that time that I would check into whether or not the proper procedure had been taken care of. So, when I finished with my meeting with her, I immediately came to City Hall, got a hold of her acting administrator, and he was aware of the situation. He told me ahead of time. He gave me a copy of the letters that were sent to the gentleman that owns the property, and I thanked him for that, and I got two copies. And I immediately went back and met with Ms. Squire and that, to give her the copy so she could put it out to the rest of residents that were there that were concerned. I guess the one question that... I don't know whether we could answer this right now at this timeframe, but with the regards of everybody there, is it a possibility to accomplish what they're talking about with a cease and desist of utilizing that parking lot the way it's being used right now?
I think we better be careful here, because this issue may come to council for review and a vote. I don't know, how does the city attorney feel about that?
I don't think we wanna get into possible enforcement in a public meeting. I'm happy to discuss it in the executive session with you all or individually. I will say that in order to stop the use of private property, and not... This is just in general. You know, the city can issue a, you know, cease and desist order, but ultimately, that has to be enforced through an injunction in the court, which you would have to sue it to get, so... Just as a general concept.
Okay. Well, folks, I wanna let you know, we'll continue to look into it and see what can possibly be done, and we appreciate you coming, and I'm glad you showed up, like you said you would. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, that lot was never, in the time I'd been there, used by the apartment buildings for parking. The residents of the apartment were never allowed to park in that dirt lot. They were all instructed to park on either side of... Until recently, on the 14th Street side, the Sheridan side of the apartment building access was chained off. But they never used that dirt parking lot for parking. So, the added traffic... The dust wasn't a problem with the dirt lot, because there wasn't traffic in it. Now, we have the stormwater issues every time it rains. Our gutters are full of sand and dirt, plus the added dust and the trash.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you for coming out. Stacy Valdez, I saw her in the crowd somewhere. There you are. Come on out. You're gonna talk about the Canyon City Pregnancy Center. We have your name?
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. My name is Stacy Valdez. I'm the executive director at the Canyon City Pregnancy Center. This is Story Thompson. She is my new public relations person and just a great coordinator. We have found through Story's outreach, as well as my own, that a lot of people really don't know what the Canyon City Pregnancy Center does, and so, we thought we would just come and let as many people know as possible, that we are not just there for pregnant moms. We are not just there for pregnancy testing. We are invested in whole-family units in the community. We are not associated with Planned Parenthood. We are a spiritual, faith-based, non-denominational, as long as it's whole Bible, and we will support any family regardless of their spiritual beliefs. We help with clothing, diapers, baby food. We help with education, which is huge, because a lot of people, they're... They come to us very broken, and they don't know how to get out of that poverty mindset. And when they're able to earn something that they need for their home, they're willing to take classes, then we're able to educate them and walk alongside them and empower them to make better choices for the future, which significantly impacts our community here. It impacts our local economy. It impacts our children that are going into schools where they have better support. Our boutique manager always tries to make sure that every family leaves with a book. We're very big on reading and education, and we are hoping to expand with some new programs this fall with more community-based classes as well. We're collaborating with WIC, DHS, the Health Department, St. Thomas Moore, and some educators as well. Looks like they wanna come alongside of us, so that we can have more accountability, use peer pressure in a positive way, because if somebody else sees that this family over here is learning that, well, maybe I wanna learn it, too. And then, they also are able to build relationships. A lot of them come from homes that are... They haven't been taught how to have relationship with other people, and when they're able to meet another couple or another parent who is struggling in the same way, or maybe it's a grandparent. We do have a lot of grandparents that come in with their grandbabies. Then, they're able to build that relationship, and they all of a sudden have a support system that they never had before. Do you have anything you wanna add?
Just that the Pregnancy Center has been active in this community for 35 years. This year, yay! And, yeah, this is our anniversary, in that it's just a foundation of the community. We wanna get the word out. So, the more... So the more people we can help, it's, the more people that we can help, the more people can eventually pour back into this community itself. So it is not a fly-by-night organization. We are here to stay.
All right.
Okay. Could you give us the address and maybe your working hours or hours that you're open?
Address is five oh eight Greenwood. We're open Monday through Friday, nine to four.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both for coming out. Thank you so much. Mr. Monty Cloninger, would you step forward? You want to talk about stormwater?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. If I can read what my wife typed here. My name is Monty Cloninger, and my wife, Doris Jean, own property at six thirty-one Fraser Avenue. We have lived on this property over fifty years since April of sixty-nine. We bordered the river on the south side of our property for close to one half a mile. We bordered with George Turner, who just spoke, on the north side for the full length of the property. During these fifty years, we have been dug up twice for sewer lines, the first in eighty-one, eighty-two for a main line between our barns and the river, which extended from our west boundary for about three-fourths of our place, at which time it turns northeast and enters George Turner's property. This line, I understand at the time, it was a twenty-four-inch line and is approximately ten foot deep. We have four manholes on our property due to this sewer line. The next time was in two thousand two, two thousand three, when we were dug up right by our house to install a fifteen-inch sewer line, which extends to the twenty-four-inch line and what's connected, and they had to stay on the west side of that WPA ditch with that line. So it's six foot just under the edge of our house. Now, maybe some of you don't know of the large storm drain, which is a concrete box which was put in by the WPA in the thirties, and the opening measures, the opening measures ten foot wide and four foot deep where it dumps into the river. This storm drain is right under our driveway extending to the river, and during a heavy rain in North Canyon, I have watched this storm drain pour thousands of gallons of water into the river, just full as it can be. Occasionally, Glenn DeBecker has inspected this storm drain and has advised me to keep an eye on the open part of it where it goes into the oil creek ditch at the junction of Coons and Vine, and to let her know if there are any objects that might plug the opening, and I do this from time to time, take a look at that. And I've pulled some canvas and other things out of there. My main point is that isn't one large storm drain per property enough, or do we have to contend with another project to cut our property in half? We've been faithful taxpayers here in Fremont County for over fifty-eight years and for close to thirty-five years paid taxes on sixteen rent houses, plus our own home. I have not replied back about the two certified letters wanting permission to survey here drive stakes and whatever they desire to do. We have twenty-four shares of oil creek ditch, which is enough for twenty-four acres, and this allows us to cut three cuttings of hay from June through September, and then we have cattle on there from November through February. It seems very unreasonable to plant another storm drain on, on this property, which will greatly diminish the value. We understand the problem of stormwater, but we feel the WPA storm drain on our property, if monitored, is sufficient for this area, respectfully.
Thank you, Monty. Any comments for Mr. Cloninger?
I was just wondering, Mayor, if it might be prudent to have a sit-down face-to-face meeting with some of the property owners and to go over the project and the scope and what we're planning so we can get a better feel, so we both can get a better feel of your concerns, the property lines, and also maybe answer a lot of questions. It seems like there's a lot of unknowns. I'm pretty sure none of our conversations included three hundred wide, foot-wide, you know, projects. We don't have that much money. But let's sit down and talk and, and see if we can come with a win-win solution that's comfortable for you. We do have a hundred and sixty-seven million dollars' worth of projects that need to be done in Canyon City, and if yours is one of the, that street and intersection is one of the worst of the worst that people have been wanting us to address for, you know, decades as well, if there's not any, if we can't come up with a solution, there's lots of other places we can spend that money, but that is one that really is a priority for us. So, so if you're open, let's sit down and let's talk.
Mr. George Story? Would you do the timer?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm George Story. I live at seven-ten Hazel Avenue, and what I'm proposing is just food for thought. I think we need a four-way stop sign, four-way stoplight put at Fifteenth Street North and at its main, Main Street. You would have to take out the roundabout at night to do it, but I've seen a lot of wrecks with cars. I've seen kids hit with bicycles, and I've almost been hit with cars and everything else. This is just food for thought, but something needs to be done with that intersection. And thanks for letting me speak, and everyone, have a good night.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Story. Would you like to comment? Mr. Meister?
I thought I saw a chief of police in here. Can you get us some data on that intersection?
Is that, is that traffic circle ours or C.D.O.T.s?
That's ours.
We didn't build it.
I thought it is. Fifteenth?
I don't know. It was before I was on council. That's, that's, that's C.D.O.T.s, but we can, I think we can get information on that. I saw, well, on the access plan, there was Fifteenth Street, and it didn't seem like there were a lot of accidents there, but would, or Chief Harvey, would you step forward, please? You have a pensive look on your face. Pensive, right?
Pensive. You're going to have to define that. I'm a simple guy.
I'm not even going to spell it, to be honest with you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we've actually looked at this intersection a couple of times, both from a pedestrian traffic issue. We've actually had officers out there watching that intersection and actually pulled stats. It's not on our top-five list of statistical, large crash areas within the city, but it is obviously one of the ones that we're watching. I was trying to find the actual stats on my phone as, as this issue was coming up, but unfortunately wasn't able to find them, but I can, I can follow back up with you, and we can increase enforcement in that area.
Okay. We should try that, I think, if that's, if that truly is case. I think we do have traffic counts and accidents and everything, and I believe our current access plan goes from Fifteenth Street to First Street currently right now, and that would be on that, and we're meeting constantly, it seems like, on that, so. Thank you, Chief Harvey.
Yes, sir.
Any comments from council at this time? This is where if you have an exciting event you're going to, you can invite me and everybody else. No? We have a vision committee on Wednesday night, correct? Oh, for quiet. And, what?
I have some things to announce.
Ms. Smith, please, go forward. I'm sinking, I'm sinking here.
Have some patience with me. I do have a couple of, kind of, I guess, exciting things. The UCOG with Beth Lenz and Autumn Dever and Judy Lones, Gwen from Solvista, and I were able to meet together, and they put a bid to host a convention for the Rural Philanthropy Days, and we won that bid, which means we're going to be hosting a convention next summer and a potential filling three hundred and fifty hotel rooms. But the significant thing is that it brings in some really big names of donors that will give to nonprofits, and traditionally when a city hosts the RPD, that oftentimes we will get some pretty awesome benefits for our nonprofits in our area for that, so that's really exciting for Canyon City to have that, and thank them for their effort in bringing those folks into, into our community. Also, we had at the Abbey, a ULI opportunity where professionals came to Canyon City, and they interviewed a number of stakeholders about the Abbey grounds, and they were able to use their professional assessments to come up with the suggested master plan. It was just a, an incredible benefit that Dina Svetlik had put together for us to kind of get some vision for the potential that property and uses and for potential buyers. And one of the things I learned from that, and I just kind of want to reach out to council, is that opportunity zones is something that we've been talking about utilizing for potential tax development, tax credit cuts for development, and that's going to peak in three years. And they really suggested that we take advantage of the opportunity zones and get those done by December thirty-first. And so if that's something that we're serious about having those tax credit opportunities, we need to really get on it for it, and so I just wanted to share some of those little highlights that we've had.
Okay. Ms. Coffrin?
Mine is. Your name is definitely on it. I just wanted to say that tomorrow we're doing a candidate forum for city council candidates at six PM here. For anybody who's interested in running for city council, it's a great opportunity for you to come and learn a bit, a little bit more about what we do and, and any questions you may have, and I strongly encourage anybody that's considering running for council to attend this tomorrow, and that's at six PM here at City Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Coffrin. Ms. Gonzalez?
I just, I wanted to let the community know that myself and a coworker just recently met with a representative from Kewanas. They're looking to reopen the Kewanas here in Fremont County. They're actively looking for representatives that can help get the organization off the ground, so I'm just putting that out there. They need ten people to get it started, and then from there they can just grow. Also, I wanted to clarify on a schedule issue real quick. The urban renewal meeting, it's on a Thursday night, twenty-ninth?
That's correct.
Just unusual to me, so, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we've got some presenters coming in, and that's what worked with their schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that'll be here at City Hall.
That'll be here at City Hall.
Okay. Anyone else? This time I'd like to invite Jessica Kober to come forward. I'm going to read a proclamation here in a little bit proclaiming this month as Suicide Prevention Month and the third, and also to announce the Third Annual Fremont County Out of the Darkness Community Walk. And Jessica, if you could stand there long enough, I'll read this as fast as I can. Would you like to pass that to council? We could take a look at it, or what?
Yeah, that would be great.
Or not? Okay. This is a proclamation that I signed. It's National Suicide Prevention Month two thousand nineteen. Whereas Canyon City is home to more than sixteen thousand people, a place of destination for thousands of visitors annually, and the site of about a dozen state correctional facilities, and whereas the Fremont County coroner reported twenty-three suicides were investigated in two thousand eighteen, and whereas Fremont County average number of deaths by suicide typically is twelve to sixteen per year, whereas suicides cost Colorado a total of more than one billion of combined lifetime medical and work loss in two thousand seventeen, or an average of one point two million per suicide death, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and whereas in two thousand nineteen, suicide was Colorado's seventh-leading cause of death and the second-leading cause of death for ages fifteen through forty-four, and whereas a record one thousand one hundred and eighty-one people in Colorado died by suicide in two thousand eighteen, and whereas the total deaths of suicide reflect a total of twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy years of potential life lost before age sixty-five, and whereas an average one person dies by suicide every seven hours in this state. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by Canyon City Mayor, me, Preston Trautman, that September two thousand nineteen is hereby designated as National Suicide Prevention Month in Canyon City. Mayor Trautman and the city council do urge all people of Canyon City to become educated on suicide prevention awareness and support those affected by suicide during this month and throughout the year. Signed by me. Ms. Kober, would you like to make comments?
Sure. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself and why I am involved with suicide awareness. My eighteen-year-old son, Dalton, died by suicide on June eighteenth of two thousand fourteen. Dalton was really an amazing son, big brother, grandson, and friend. He was very kind, caring, smart, and handsome. Dalton was the twenty-fourteen Florence High School valedictorian. He had been accepted to and was preparing to attend the Colorado School of Mines that fall to pursue a degree in chemical engineering. Dalton was that friend that others reached out to, but he never was able to reach out when he needed it. We always say now that he suffered in silence. We had no warning signs with Dalton. We had no idea. I want you to know that if this can happen to my family, it can happen to your family. Suicide does not discriminate. Dalton grew up with, in a two-parent home with grandparents, aunts, and uncles. We always said he had the world at his fingertips. I will always be a voice for Dalton and for suicide awareness. I'd like to share a few facts and figures about suicide in Colorado that you may not be aware of. On average, one person dies by suicide every seven hours in the state. Over six times as many people died by suicide in Colorado in two thousand seventeen than in alcohol-related motor vehicle accidents. Suicide is the seventh-leading cause of death in Colorado. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for ages fifteen to forty-four. Please remember, as we talk about suicide and the statistics, the lines on the graphs, and the pushpins on the map, they represent somebody, a son, a daughter, a brother, my son Dalton. They all have names and are more than the way in which they died. I'm also here to share some information about the Third Annual Fremont County Out of the Darkness Community Walk. I am the chairperson for this walk. It is hosted by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and their mission is to save lives and bring hope to those affected by suicide. One of our goals is to bring awareness and conversation about suicide and mental health to our community, to bring together people who have been affected by suicide, whether losing a loved one or making an attempt themselves, and everyone in between, to give each other hope and support, to create an environment where we can speak open and honestly about mental health and suicide, to get rid of the stigma behind those two words, to learn it's okay to reach out for help and to ask if someone needs help and to know what to do when someone does. A poem that they have written about the Out of the Darkness walks. "Out of the darkness and into the light, not a battle we choose, but one we will fight. We've all lost a loved one to this hidden foe, so out of the darkness in numbers we go. We raise awareness as we walk the walk and fight against stigmas still plaguing most talk. Each suicide victim, a dear precious soul, who battled a darkness that took a great toll. Suicide's victims can't utter a word, but we are survivors and we can be heard. The stigma must end and awareness must rise. We carry, carry this message with tears in our eyes. From all walks of life, we now gather for them and shine in their honor with light from within." This year's walk will take place on Saturday, September seventh, at Centennial Park. Walk day registration and check-in begins at nine AM. There is no fee to walk. There is no minimum amount to fundraise. We just ask that everybody that participates, participates registers to walk. You can also do so online at AFSP.org/fremont. You can walk as an individual, join a team, or create a team of your own. We will have a memory, memory area with honor beads where you can, or memory pins and a memory board where you can post a picture of your loved one or write a message or both. New this year, we will have a silent auction with lots of donations from the community with some great items to bid on. This is an event of hope, healing, and connection, and I hope you will join me as we walk to fight suicide. I know together that we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Thanks for coming forward, and thanks for doing what you're doing. That, that's tough.
It is.
Very tough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council members like to add, or? Nope. This time I'd like to have you come forward and the council, we can go down front and like to take a picture for Carrie. Come on up. Okay. Could I ask the acting and sitting administrator, Mr. Stevens, to review the consent agenda items?
Absolutely. Mayor and members of council, item 8A is approval of minutes for regular city council meetings on March 18th, April 1st, April 15th, and August 5th, as well as special city council meetings on May 6th, and the general government committee meeting, meetings on August 7th and August 14th. Item 8B, authorize the declaration of found and abandoned property as surplus and grant appropriation to the police department as government property. 8C, awards bid 4719 wayfinding signs, gateway monuments. 8D is update to the HR job, HR director job description. 8E is the monthly budget summary, and 8F is receive and file list of bills.
Any discussions? Any questions? Mr. Meisner?
We have this bid recap sheet?
Yes.
For the gateway monuments? And who are you?
The first one on the left.
We're doing arch-type, right?
What? Arch, I think.
We're doing the award to arch-type?
Arch-type is correct.
For 306?
For 306, $306,388.50. Includes a 10% contingency.
More? Anymore?
I don't think so.
Anyone else?
Not on that.
I was curious what the timeframe was on this, on the monument signs?
On the monument signs? 75 days.
Says the man in the darkness, right?
And what about wayfinding?
The internal wayfinding signs? That's, has it gone out to bid yet, Adam?
Nope.
Nope, that'll be going out to bids. We're hoping to get the wayfinding, the internal wayfinding out as soon as possible.
Just, I, I think that we need to say that those, these signs that we're approving are the very large welcome entry signs to both ends of town. They're very big ones, sort of similar to the ones that you come down from Denver to Colorado Springs, they're of that magnitude. And I think it would be coming of our town to have that type of entry monument that says Canyon City.
I'd also point out that we also had a citizen committee that helped us formulate and choose those monument signs. We really tried to turn to the public as much as we can, and they had important input on that, and we're really excited for the project. Do we have prototypes on our website? If they look?
I will have to double-check to make sure that we do. We, we did at one point, but I'll double-check to make sure they're still up.
Yeah, that would be nice, so you could go on to our website and find how the wayfinding signs are going to look. They're, they're quite spectacular, I believe, and the citizens that help appreciate all that, but it was driven by what they wanted, what you wanted, so. You have a question? And look, Mr. Meisner?
Did he go over the complete consent agenda?
Yeah.
And I have a question still. You talked about the HR position?
We're going, we're going to talk about it, aren't we?
It's on the consent agenda.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Do you have questions on the HR?
Sure.
Would you please go ahead?
Well, I'd send an email requesting an overview in terms of how that new process would work.
There, there, and I responded to the emails earlier today. Probably haven't had a chance to see it yet. We are looking at refining some of those processes, even looking at a technology implementation to improve and streamline some of the hiring processes, and even looking at employee self-administration of benefits through a technology solution. But we, you know, we're in that, that process right now, looking at vendors.
Okay. Just tell me about if I want to get hired by the city. What's that process going to be? I don't, I?
It's not going to be much different than it is right now. It's still going to get posted on, onto, in the daily record, it's still going to be on our website, it's still going to be at City Hall, posted on social media. People are still going to apply through whatever means we have in the job app advertisement. Those job description, or those resumes come back, they get distributed to department heads who vet them and then decide who they're going to interview.
So the department director is venting those and hiring?
They, yeah, they get, they get the applications and they will be hiring as well, yep.
Okay. All right, Ms. Cochran?
Ryan, what kind of timeframe do you anticipate having hired a new HR manager?
It's just going to depend on the applications that we get in.
Okay.
We plan on posting it tomorrow if it's approved today.
Okay. And then how long is it typically posted for?
We will be, it'll be posted until filled.
Posted until filled, okay.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So going back to Jim's question, currently, right now, as I understand it, the HR does all the interviewing, the director does all the interviewing for most, for most departments. And then hiring is, am I not understanding that correctly, or?
Department heads do the interviewing.
Okay.
I think the, previously, I think some of the applications were screened out before they reached the department head.
Okay, and so that process is?
Right, so, you know, with the technology solution that we're looking at, the, you know, we could put some qualifications in there where the technology might actually screen out some of those applications ahead of time based off of minimum qualifications.
Okay. And who, who currently, right now, is, is working interim?
It's, we've got, it's a group effort right now.
Okay, so collaborative, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Meisner?
New subject. I had also sent some information regards to the, the budget figures that, that were submitted, regards specifically to sales tax income.
So at, at the end of July, we were down only $3,000 from budget, from a sales tax standpoint. And I did email some graphs over to you as well, showing totals year-to-date at, at the end of July.
Just as a point of interest, and I don't know if there's any direct correlation, but earlier in this year, we did have the federal shutdown. We had a lot of federal employees affected. But we also, this summer, we've, I've heard consistently from several different tourist sectors that it's been a really rough year for tourism this summer. You know, June was really wet and cold, and it just didn't pick up after that. And I wonder if we will see a reflection in that in our tax money revenues, probably not this quarter, but in the following quarter when they remit the, the reports.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, it's, you know, I, I've heard the same things talking to the, the tourism operators.
Ms. Meisner?
So we roughly picked up $3 million in July?
From a sales tax standpoint?
Yeah. I mean, I'm showing at the end of June, we're at 2.9. We're budgeted at 7. We were at 39% at the end of June. We made a drastic change in one month.
Well, those were the sales tax numbers that I had, so I, I can double-check those and, and get back to you.
Okay.
Is anybody else not alarmed at the fact that they're 39% at the end of June?
Yes. What do you do about it?
Well, I would like to have a conversation with our finance director because not only, I mean, do we have these numbers, but there's a lot of projection for recession coming in the coming years, and I think we need to be prepared and ready.
Tammy, or ahead?
So the figures you have are actually through, I think that's our, you have the, you have the June figures there, correct? The sales tax that Ryan is referring to, we have our collections that we have through the end of July. When we looked at where we budgeted for the year by month, we're now only down $3,400 from where we based our budget through July, because we have it figured by month. So we're not at the $7 million. We, right, but we are only about $3,400, or $3,400, I think, difference from where we had budgeted, our projection with the 3% increase over 2018. And we, we can send you, Ryan does have those graphs that we can get, get sent out.
And those should be in your mailbox.
Do you know off the top of your head, was the, was the month-to-month projection at the end of June, was that roughly at 50%?
I don't, I don't recall right off the top of my head. We do know that most of our sales tax, so what we collected in June was for periods through May. So basically, the sales that happened through May, we collected those in June. And so the tourist season and those type of things really had not started kicking in yet. The collections that we had in July reflect our June sales.
Right.
Does that, does that make sense? So we would not show 50% typically as of, as of June, just because it is so seasonal. We do rely more so on, I think it's June, July, August, and September numbers to get the majority. That's when we, we see the spike in our sales tax, are those months.
Okay. Any further questions? Any other questions?
And Mr., oh, go ahead.
No, no.
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So if you have a question, this would be a good time.
I'm trying to find it. There was a projection in here with revenue from the gorge. It's like the information from the first projection from the Royal Gorge revenue didn't kind of match up with the second page on Royal Gorge revenue with attendance figures. Okay, never mind. Jumping.
You're on the caffer.
But on the budget thing, on street projects, we have capital outlay. Now, these pages aren't numbered, which assumingly next year, they would be numbered, or next presentation, but on capital outlay for street projects, that's assumingly is not 2A funds? Is that part of the $400,000 thing, or? It's only at 3%. I find that. Can somebody answer that? Does that make sense?
I think that was for 2018, so we didn't spend all of it in 2018.
I don't know what year it is.
I don't think it's 2A.
Which item number are you on?
Well, I'm on a page that says, it's Public Works.
Which tab are you on, I guess?
Oh, I'm on Echo.
Echo, okay.
Tammy, would you like to clarify something?
So you're looking at the actual monthly budget summary where it looks like a spreadsheet where you have your first, you have columns, that's the description, and then the month, and then the year-to-date? Is that what you're looking at? And then the budget? If you're in, since I don't, I don't have it in front of me, we do have two different things. We have our general fund, streets, projects.
Right.
And then we have a separate fund that has the street, the 2A projects.
Right.
So if you, if it's closer to the front, that's our general fund. Those are the projects in general fund.
So this is the last page that you're looking at, Jim? Is that correct?
Uh, no. It says at the top?
Equipment Repair, Public Works Division. Is that the one?
It's the fifth page on this general fund revenue. And it starts with Public Works.
That's a different than 2A. That would be different than 2A.
Yes, that is different than 2A.
It's, 2A is a different fund altogether.
I know, but why are we only at 3%?
As in, for our spending?
Yeah. And we keep telling people, we don't have any money to fix streets, and here we sit at the half of the year, and we're only at 3%. Something doesn't make sense.
Does that have anything to do with weather and the ability to actually do street repairs during the winter?
I don't know, I must be?
Half the, half the work that we've done so far, we haven't even paid the contractors for yet. It's just because the bills aren't reflected yet in the, in what you're seeing, yeah.
All right.
So most of that work is done in the summertime. You won't see, you'll see huge checks written for that in September, October, that sort of stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. And like, for example, the chip seal hasn't, they've done the crack seal, but chip seal hasn't even started yet.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
What'd he say?
He said we're going to spend it.
Well, we historically haven't.
Okay. I'd ask for, are we ready for a motion? Go ahead.
Can I please make a motion that we approve the agenda, consent agenda?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran? Aye. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Hi.
Councilmember Hakes?
Hi.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Good discussion, thank you. I'd ask the acting city administrator, Mr. Stevens, welcome back.
Thank you.
Did you get that cold, you're on your travels, or?
I did.
You did? Wow.
I wish.
I wish, yeah. Do you have a report for us?
Actually, a lot of what I was going to report has already been reported. Rural philanthropy days and the, you know, a few things that do want to say. The 26th is the last day for citizens to express interest and get their petitions filled out if they want to serve on city council. So that, that's coming up. And then the projects, the 2A projects in front of the schools were completed for a school opening today. Looked like everything ran fairly smooth. There are still punch lists that need to be completed.
And how about Fourth Street?
What's that?
Pretty much done. Fourth Street, I think it's done, or pretty close?
Fourth, Fourth Street? Yeah, they're, they're working on the punch list now.
Okay.
I saw them Saturday night, still working. They, they put in some longer hours to make sure they're ready for school, and I appreciated that.
That's probably cooler. Ms. Cochran?
Since you brought up the schools, the high schools' scheduling changed this year, and they're doing every other Friday off, and so to reflect that, they have longer school days. And the speed limit signs surrounding the high school are up until 3:30, but now they get out at 3:30, so the times on those speed limit?
We'll get those adjusted.
Need to be changed.
Get Adam over there with the magic.
Yeah, just cross it out.
Would you like to jump in here, Mr.?
Yeah, I was just going to let you know, we did switch the flashers to the correct time.
Okay.
The signs have been ordered.
Okay.
We just only got the notification of those times two weeks ago or so, what they were actually going to be.
Okay, as long as it's being worked on.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Then I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing as number 10. It's introduction, first reading by title only of ordinance number 18, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Repealing Ordinance Number 29, Series 2017, and Resoning Certain Property When the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Known as 615 Pike Avenue," I believe. Patrick, would you like to take over from here?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The first of our public hearings this evening is a request to rezone the property at 615 Pike Avenue. This is to create a new planned development, or PDD District, calling itself the Scholastica PDD. The subject property is a 7.41 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of North Sixth Street and Pike Ave. Street and Pike Avenue. The property is known, is known within Canyon City as the Saint Scholastica Campus, a private parochial school which had an all-female student enrollment. There are multiple buildings on site which date to different periods. The oldest is known as Big Red, it was constructed in 1897. The maintenance building was finished in 1950, and the existing dormitory building opened in 1961. The principal classroom building was finished in 1970, and the final addition to the site was the library and chapel building, which opened in 1983. The site operated as a school until 2003. In 2005, the site was again open as a juvenile detention facility, but was shut down after only 18 months of operation. Since 2007, the site has stood vacant and unmaintained. This period of lack of maintenance has taken its toll on a number of the buildings on site. In 2017, a local developer purchased the property and obtained approval of a PUD overlay to allow multiple types of residences, of residential uses on site. However, nothing came of this effort to redevelop the property, and that developer is no longer associated with this project. The subject property is currently zoned R2 and R3, medium and high-density residential respectively, with a planned unit development overlay upon it, which allows for some relaxation of residential density limits and lot size minimums. As stated previously, this zoning was established in 2017. The applicant seeks to replace this existing zoning with a planned development district, or PDD. This can be thought of as a completely customized form of zoning, one which is not necessarily related to any established Euclidean zone district defined in the Canyon City Municipal Code generally. The proposed PDD contemplates three internal land use areas, or planning areas. From north to south on site, these planning areas are PA1, the single-family residential district, PA2, the office commercial district which also features a neighborhood park, and PA3, the multifamily residential area. Each of these three planning areas not only has its own use, height, and bulk limitations, which are traditional zoning, each comes with certain design standards as well. The proposal intends to reuse the classroom and chapel library buildings as a professional office or call center, and the master developer is an investor who wishes to rehabilitate the Big Red building. The dormitory building will be renovated into a multifamily dwelling use. Finally, the neighborhood park will link all of these areas together within the community. For more detail, Planning Area 1 proposes to create 13 single-family residential lots. The proposed zoning would allow each lot to have its own, not only its own principal residence, but one accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, and match the same conditions as required for ADUs elsewhere in Canyon City. This would potentially mean as many as 26 dwelling units within this planning area. All of these dwelling units would be accessed via a proposed alley which would connect Sixth and Seventh Streets. There are no proposed driveways coming into front yards, and as this has to do with the desire to create a traditional neighborhood design for the single-family area. As contemplated, the lots would vary in size from 5,900 square feet to 7,650 square feet, with an average lot size of 6,475.8 square feet. For comparison's sake, this is approximately the same density one could achieve from the R2 medium-density residential zone district. As a traditional neighborhood design concept, the fronts of each house will orientate themselves to either Floral Avenue to the north, or to the neighborhood park to the south, and build two lines will then be employed to ensure the front door and any porches address and activate the public space adjacent to it. Planning Area 2 is the non-residential portion of the Scholastica PDD. The applicant is creating three parcels around each of the three existing buildings situated within this planning area. These, these three parcels will comprise 1.74 acres, and the existing classroom and library building are intended to be an office use dedicated to the same user. The developer is also, has hopes of rehabilitating the Big Red building and putting it into a slightly different type of office use, unrelated to the call center operation intended for the classroom and library chapel buildings. Each user will be required to meet its own off-street parking requirement separately. Making up the balance of Planning Area 2 is a neighborhood park which will feature landscaping, activity fields, and a set of internal trails. The space will form a green relief area in the middle of the Scholastica property and transition from the single-family residential uses at the north end of the site to the non-residential and higher-density residential uses at the south end of the site. Planning Area 3 is the high-density residential area within the Scholastica PDD. This portion of the Scholastica property contains the existing dormitory building. The applicant seeks to convert this building into owner-occupied condominiums. The planning area comprises 2.08 acres of the site, and the applicant plans to create 43 dwelling units. As is the case with the non-residential uses in Planning Area 2, the condominium project will meet its parking requirement on-site in the area between the building and Pike Avenue. Between Planning Areas 1 and 3, there's the potential for 69 total residential dwelling units within the Scholastica PDD. Now, in addition to the typical zoning requirements, the Scholastica PDD is also including design guidelines for the various planning areas. These pertain to landscaping, fencing types, pedestrian paths, and screening of certain areas from adjacent streets. As this project moves forward into the next steps in the PDD approval process, these details will be further refined and may include additional standards to such things as lighting or bulb building materials. Now, staff would like to reiterate that what you're, what is being considered for approval this evening is the PDD zoning for Scholastica. The intent is that there will be additional hearings as this project moves into the subdivision plating associated with the PDD. And what is being requested of council this evening is the land use concepts and arrangements of the internal planning areas associated with this project. Note that the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the Scholastica PDD rezoning request on July 24, 2019. As a result of that hearing, both staff and the Planning Commission recommend that council approve the preliminary PDD zoning request for, for the Scholastica PDD, subject to the completion of the items listed in staff's August 5, 2019 memorandum. And this approval will be presented to you as the adoption of ordinance number 18 of series 2019 on first reading. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Present to speak on behalf of this property is Mr. Phil Lund, the developer.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
You make reference in the second page of your first document in terms of the, the 1.49 community park, and then in other areas we mentioned, neighborhood park. Is that, what's the intention of that park, and who could use it?
Well, it's an, it's a park intended primarily for the residents of this Scholastica PDD, but because it's open, it's not fenced off, anyone, it'll be effectively available for public use.
And everybody understands the complications of potentially donating that land to the city?
It is not being donated to the city. There will be an association that owns it.
But I'm talking about in five years from now. It's not a simple process.
The, the applicant is aware that that is not a simple process. He is forming his own homeowners' association and owners' association for the businesses that will be the owner of that park. They will own and maintain it.
I have more, but go ahead.
Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you. Patrick, we have Attachment B in our packets, which is a memo written August 5, conditions precedent on recordation.
Yes.
Would you tell me, excuse me, would you tell me a little bit about why that was written, and what the purpose of it is?
So, as you know, a process that the city has had dating back to at least the 1990s. If an application comes in and is deemed complete by a particular date, it's automatically scheduled for hearings before Planning Commission and council. And this is whether or not the substance of what's in that application is, you know, fully complete. This being the first time that a PDD subdivision or PDD rezoning request has happened in Canyon City since approximately 2004, this is a process that's fairly new to a lot of the staff you have here. So, when we got into reviewing this, we realized that there were a number of things that were missing, or incomplete, or needed to be fixed. We decided that the quickest way to do this, rather than holding the project up from public hearing, was to attach a memo of items that needed to be complete, and until they were complete, until staff could determine that they had in fact been finalized, the rezoning would not be recorded. And the applicant, this was explained to the applicant, and the applicant found that acceptable.
Thank you. And I have one more question. We talked about the accessory, accessory dwelling units are mentioned in here. Who will make the decision on when and if an accessory dwelling unit is constructed?
So, the accessory dwelling units, unlike in other zone districts in Canyon City, these will be permitted uses. So, they can be part of the initial construction of the project. We would evaluate this as part of the actual permit request for new residential construction that happens on a lot-by-lot basis.
Is it true that the decision to construct the, the ADU could be put off until there's a new property owner, and they decided whether they wanted one or not?
Certainly, yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Meisner already asked my question.
Mr. Meisner, stop it.
My backup.
Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
In regards to the access to that upper section? An access to that upper section, where you have the alley between Sixth and Seventh. I assume, what are the requirements for surfacing on that alley?
So, that alley is going to be platted as a tract that will be owned again by that homeowners' association for the single-family area, and it will be their maintenance obligation. It will not be dedicated as public right-of-way.
Okay. Is there gonna be a requirement for surfacing on that alley?
For surfacing, yes.
Is that, where's that, what's the width of that alley compared to the typical street in Canyon? What's 26 or 32, Adam?
It'll be smaller than that.
What kind of complication does that create for access with traffic and util, and particularly trash? I mean, are, there's only gonna be able to have one vehicle fit in that alley?
It is a one-way alley, yes. That's what they are proposing.
Ms. Smith?
Patrick, I have a question for you. Recently, we did revise our PUD process, so it was streamlined and more simplified. I understand this is the PDD process. It sounds like it was pretty complicated for the staff, and I imagine it was even more complicated and a pain for the developer. And that we also are in the process of streamlining the PDD, so it can be better in the future. Is that right?
That is correct, yes. We would very much like to get in and, the PDD ordinance is sort of a series of knots that need to be untangled to the process, and we'd like to sort of streamline that and make it a bit more user-friendly.
So, I guess my question is, it sounds like you, you made an accommodation, so we didn't impede the process, that they had some accommodations they needed to make before they got their, the rezoning. Are there other things that we can do to help speed this process along its way within, you know, the code as it is now, but what else can we do to help make this be a little bit more user-friendly for our developer as we move along?
Are you talking current, currently?
Yeah, as is now.
I, I think for us, it's, it's looking at, you know, we have to follow, follow our process, but if, if we can move dates, you know, we have regularly scheduled dates, it's possible to move some dates up. Looking at, you know, what needs to be done, and, you know, within our code, we, we can see what we can do to make some accommodations.
I appreciate that, and I really would like to strongly suggest to council that if we can make some accommodations to speed up the timeline, we can. Sometimes the problem is, they have to wait two weeks or in between our city, regularly scheduled city council meetings. If we can do something scheduled on a Wednesday vision committee, or something, we're already here, or a quick special meeting, if we can make that go a little faster, I think that would be nice, to be a little bit more business-friendly. And I'm, I'm really excited about the changes happening, and I want to do the best we can to make it as good as we can for them.
Okay. Ms. Hockes?
Yeah, I wanna make a, I wanna ask a question and then make a statement. Based on what we would approve, if we approve it now, just what can the developer start doing?
So, right now, if they wanted to file a subdivision exemption plat to condominiumize the dormitory, they could do that right now.
Okay.
And then, you know, begin working on the condominium conversions. The, the next major step that's gonna have to happen is the subdivision that's gonna create the necessary lots. This PDD, if, when it's approved and recorded, will create three internal land use areas. And they can then, by virtue of those three land use areas, go in and begin renovating buildings within each of the three land use areas. But to actually go vertical with new construction, for example, in Planning Area 1, they have to actually plat the lots under which those are gonna get built.
Okay, thank you. And my statement is, these gentlemen have been holding all these papers in their hands. They want to come and talk to us, and I think we should let them come up and present theirselves, so that if we have questions, they're the ones that are gonna be developing this, and we can ask them questions with regards to that. We went through all the other stuff that you've given us, which is good material, so I would appreciate that we allowed the two gentlemen here approach, hold them, and talk to us.
Yeah, I wanted to go ahead and make sure council had Patrick's attention. So, Mr. Lund, if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself and your, your helper there.
Yep. He's passing out some material that I'm gonna be making reference to, if you don't mind, so I'll just let you get that first, and, and I do have some, if anybody from the public ... Thank you. He's got one for you.
Thank you, Lester. So, good evening, everyone, and Mr. Mayor and council, and it's our pleasure to be here tonight, talking about what's happening at the Scholastica PDD, as we're referring to it. And Patrick did a fine job with laying that out. We have got first-name basis with all the city council, or, excuse me, the staff here at Canyon City Government. And that's been a positive thing as far as relationship. So, I've got some thoughts that I want to talk about, and one is Canyon City as a whole. Canyon City is going through some amazing projects now, and I'm new to the community. I've only been here two years. We started out as Homes of the Canyon, doing some residential rehabilitation kind of things. And then we specifically did a condo conversion at the corner of Second and Macon, and that was an eight-unit apartment complex that I led. We converted to condos. I worked with Patrick at the time, and other city officials in that condominium process. And that's been successful, and we have sold six of the eight units that are there, and we have purchase agreements on the other two. So, condominiums is a form of process that people are liking. So, good things happen in Canyon City, and we are happy to be a small part of that as far as the efforts that are taking place in other areas. I've noticed that there are articles about Fremont County, there was recently one in a major magazine regarding rural America and the cities, and what can take place. And we view that as a piece of this, because we've got also a business function at it, as well as a housing piece that's in here. So, on, News 5 has been at the property, and we did that with Stan Bullis. He was focused on what's happening over Florence, and of course, the hotel, and they focused on this. And the point is that that's good for Canyon City. There's lots of people who are paying attention. And I just got word today that Congressman Lamborn is in town, and he's going to be touring the site on Wednesday. And so, we're gonna be hosting him, and he's gonna take a tour of the whole property. So, again, I'm viewing this more than I expected as a significant piece of Canyon City's development. And a couple people have said, you gotta nail this thing, because this is important for the trajectory of Canyon City and the momentum, and that Canyon City can get some things done and make some things happen. So, we want to make sure that we do that. So, the Scholastica property, what happened there is Mr. Butler, the former owner, I was aware of some lots, and Dina, who of course is community development director, introduced me to him in December. And I had coffee with Dina, just talking about various projects that were here in town. So, that's the connection where I got access to Mr. Butler, and I found out in meeting with city staff, that we were interested in six of the lots along Floral. Well, it turns out there wasn't any lots. And so, it was just a vacant piece, nothing had been done with it. And so, I started talking with Mr. Butler about helping him get through the PUD process, and he hadn't submitted any applications for that. So, he engaged me to do that, and within a month, he started talking to me about not doing that part of it, but actually purchasing the property. And so, that's how that conversation... And so, that's how that conversation started, probably in late January, early February, and got interested in this property, especially with the condo project that is down there, because I've had experience with that. I'm originally from Michigan. I'd done a 42-unit complex in Michigan as far as a conversion, and I'd done also a retail complex, converting that into business condos. So, this is something that is in my wheelhouse, if you will, as far as doing some things. I've got some background with it and know some of the challenges that are out there as well. So, we went ahead and worked on the purchase. The purchase was quite complex, to be honest, and it dragged out longer than we planned. But on May 10th, we went ahead and closed on the property. And we had already started the process with the city in April, as far as conversations, and I want to get into that in just a moment as well. So, this was something that works. One thing I want to mention is, we're calling this the Scholastica PDD on purpose. The reason is, is we want to maintain the history of this property. It's got a fabulous history in this community, and from now on, any descriptions that come out of that property is going to make a reference to Scholastica on any legal description, and that's a good thing for this property as far as making it happen. You're aware that there's a historical building on the property, and we are doing our best to make sure that that continues. We had, some of you might have attended a meeting that was held a couple of other times, and I've talked about that specific meeting. There was an alumni that was interested in helping out with raising some funds to make that happen. She has since withdrawn, and I am not interested in putting a hatchet to that property and leveling it at this point, specifically the Big Red Building. We're going to work to preserve that. And I just did a tour this morning with Mike Madone. Some of you may be aware that he restores historical properties, and he's getting highly interested. We're going to have further conversations about that. So, this is something that is of terrible interest to us to make sure we can preserve that. I laid on the back table some photographs. There's about three or four binders back there, and when we took down the maintenance building, these were in there, and I think it's got some connection to some employee that was there. I don't know who these people are, but if anybody wants to look through that and you can find out who that individual is, we'd like to get those books back to them. They were heading for a Pueblo landfill, and we decided we're going to grab ahold of those and make those work. So, all the history on, Patrick mentioned in '61 that the dormitory was done. There's also a time capsule that's related to that as well. It's inside the dorm, and we're having some debate about if we, when we open it for condos, do we open it then, have the press there, the mayor at the time, to open that up, or do we wait till 2021, which would be 60 years? We're having discussion about that, but you can imagine that some young ladies back in 1961 put some things in there about 60 years ago, and it would be very interesting what that is. So, we converted, as Patrick mentioned, we're going from PUD to PDD, and the big difference is that the PD was basically focused on housing. We have a business component to this. And what happened there, you can thank Dolly, if this turns out, for that, Councilman Gonzalez, sorry about that. I was at Small Business Revolution, and we were at the gym, and you were leaning it, Mr. Mayor, and Chris Cohn was sitting in front of me. I hadn't met Chris ever, and Councilman Gonzalez, Councilperson Gonzalez, made that introduction. And so, Chris and I chose to have coffee thereafter, and we got interested in campus, and we went over there, and he got interested specifically in the chapel building as well as the classroom building. We'll see where he goes, but the chapel building specifically. So, that made it so that a PDD made more sense. Planned Development District, which has a business component to it, an economic development component, as opposed to the PUD, and so, that became our focus. And the other thing that that did was actually make it, again, the historical thing, that we're going to preserve some of these buildings. The former owner was basically leveling it, except for Big Red and for the dormitory. Everything else was going to be leveled. We took a different tack to that, and basically, we're going to preserve a couple more buildings than what that plan was. And if you've been by the site, you're aware that the gym is already down, the pool's gone, the, the tennis courts are gone. We just took down the walkway, and that collapsed immediately. If you've ever been on my Facebook page that's dealing with that property, it was just kaboom, down it was. And if you drive by it tonight, you're going to notice that the auditorium is still in play, and what's happening there is we're trying to preserve the classroom. And so, we've got some issues with when we tear that down to not have it collapse into the classroom building. And so, tomorrow onsite is going to be a crane at 7:00, 7:30 in the morning to bring in from Denver, and we're going to pick up some of the ceiling plates on there and make it so there's a big gap between those two buildings, and then they can take that down. And the whole thing demolition-wise, and off to a Pueblo landfill and somewhere along the river here in town for the concrete that was good, if you know that the person that we're taking that to, we're helping out with the river thing with some of the concrete that's coming out of there. But the whole thing should be gone September 1st, as far as the demolition's taking place. So, gym was in bad shape, the pool was in terrible shape, the walkway offered no, nothing for the benefit of the campus either, and the auditorium, we would have liked to preserve, but it was sinking away. It, they had some drainage problems there, and the whole thing was sinking away, rough leaks. There was no way to preserve that. So, all of that is taking place, and it's a good thing for the property as far as making those things happen. So, the other piece is asbestos. It's been in the paper regarding some of the asbestos issues. I want to assure you that we followed code on everything. We went through the permit process here in Canyon City. We went through the permit process with the state. We've had air test quality, all those kind of things. And specifically, again, I want to just make sure we got this nailed down, so there's no question about the asbestos issues in Canyon City regarding this property. The only asbestos that was in the gym was in the male and the female bathrooms. The female, of course, was set up for, you know, the, them to come in and use as a locker room and stuff like that. So, we got that out. The other issue was the popcorn ceiling that was in the walkway. We went in and isolated that, got that out, and the last one was in the control room that was in the auditorium. We went in and got that out as well. So, all the asbestos was removed from the demolition area, and I can tell you that as of Saturday, the first three floors, which is first, second, and third, is cleaned out in the dormitory. And all that is left at this point is simply the basement of the dormitory. They're working on that today and the rest of the time, and we're expecting by September 1st that all that has been removed as well. And all, again, according to code, certified people coming in and doing the air testing, everything else. So, many of you haven't been able to get in that dormitory as a result of big signs that says asbestos and everything. Those signs are coming down, because the first, second, third floor are now asbestos-free and any other thing that they had. They cleaned it up real nice. It's like a different building. And the basement, which I've been in, has still got some challenges, but it won't have come September 1st. So, that's all taking place, and it's a good thing, and we're making some significant progress along those lines. So, I want to refer a little bit to the handout. Patrick's already put this up, so you really don't need to do that. But I do want to talk about how do we make this thing work? And this is going to be an investment that takes place, and you've got it there. You know, we're expecting about a $7.6 million investment on this particular property, and that does not include the land. So, when you throw in the land price, we're talking about an $8 million investment. You can look at where the various figures are. These are all ballpark round numbers, but this is a significant investment in Canyon City to make this thing happen. And the other thing that's on this is the jobs. And in talking with Chris Cohn, I don't think he had some issues with his family that he needed to go with, with school starting today, et cetera. But he's looking at between 60 and 90 jobs that would be on this campus, and he's talking about they have a base rate of around $40,000. If you've ever heard him talk about this, many of these are going to be Canyon City students who come through this fantastic program. It's a great thing to leverage this into the community. And so, you're talking about an annual payroll of between $2.4 and $3.6 million that would be on this campus. It's a huge thing. And so, $7.6 million investment, $2.4 to $3.6 million payroll happening here, and something we're very excited about, and we want to be making this thing happen. So, I don't have $7.6 million, so the question is, how does this happen? And this has been the plan all along. Ryan and I met prior to our purchase of this property, and I think you guys might have went into executive session at one point prior to the purchase of this property as well, and dealt specifically with that. And I laid out the plan that my expertise is dealing with the condominium thing, because, as I mentioned, that's in my background and, but the other thing was to get this thing off from dead center. We both agreed, Ryan and myself, and I knew that was kind of where the council was, and certainly the neighbors, that this thing had to not be like it was. It was basically pigeons all over the place. It was a contamination. We have had a number of problems with people getting in and destroying things, and there's just been a lot of problems with this particular campus. That was the worst position that this thing could drag on longer than that. So, I had investments that took place, and with those investments, we were able to come up with the sum of money to make this thing happen and to get involved with the demolition, to get involved with the asbestos removal, and you can look back at that other piece. But we've got more than, well, more than a million dollars invested in this particular property at this point. And what the plan was all along is to go ahead and recoup those dollars with, because Chris was already in conversation, so to recoup the dollars coming back from the sale of the classroom, sale of the chapel, sale of Big Red, sale of those lots, and those dollars comes back into the dormitory, and we're able to get that done. And so, that's the challenge, to make that happen on a timely basis. So, if you're looking at the thing, we've got the initial investment, which we have participated in, Homes of the Canyon LLC, and then you've got five different segments that pop up there, the dormitory, the chapel, the classroom, the historic, and the lots home and homes. And those are, I'm viewing those as revenue streams that bring capital back into the project. They make it so that all this $7.6 million can happen. And 7.6, by the way, is with the homes built out, et cetera. So, those are where those pieces come from. So, and the way we've got it set up is each contributes to tract A, the exterior trees, the sidewalks, all those things are all part of their sale price, and I already have people who are ready to go. So, we've got a developer that wants to do the houses along Floral and has participated in a number of meetings. As I mentioned, Mr. Cohn is interested specifically in the chapel building and the classroom building. We're working out those details, but that's going to be something to do with business. And again, we're working to try to preserve, best we can, the Big Red thing.
Okay, we have other things on the agenda too. I don't mean to cut you off, but can we?
Can I have at least 10 more minutes? This is important.
All right.
Okay, thank you. So, we've got some major risks that are there. One is capital. How do we make that? Time is a big issue, the macroeconomy, contractors, and the political climate, and I won't get into any more of those. I do want to get into some challenges that we've had. I am for Canyon City, but we've had a bear of a time with getting this through the process, and I am specifically going to raise those issues tonight, because I've sat in planning commission, or planning meetings with you, and you've asked developers to come forward, tell us any challenges you've had, and I'm going to talk about that, and I just need 10 minutes, Mr. Mayor, to work through that, because I think it's important that you guys understand. My understanding is that as council and administrator government, that you have a quasi-judicial role in this issue, and I would have raised issues with you singly prior to this, but I haven't been able to do that, because I've respected that process and realized that it's something that only the council, in a public setting, I can deal with. So, we started in February, March, and I'm going to whip through this quickly, so you can get on to other things on the agenda. February, March, we started negotiations and purchase agreement. On April 12th, Tony and others, he was administrator at the time, we had a pre-neighborhood meeting, and that happened up in the conference room up near the administrator's office, and we wanted to lay out, this is the proposal that we were thinking of. On April 18th, we laid out the workload PDD requirements for the doc and the request feedback. So, that document is this particular document. Lester Lamone, who's the architect that's been involved with this, we laid this out, a three-page document, and the request was, tell us anything we are missing if we're going to go through the PDD process. This happened, folks, on April 18th, which of course, you can do the math, a number of months ago at this point. We then had a May 1st meeting here. Some of you in this room participated in that, laid out that process for the neighbors even before we purchased the property, and trying to figure out, are they in agreement with this or not? And we have heard nothing but positive feedback. As I mentioned, May 10th, we had a close. And May 16th, we had a pre-application meeting per the ordinance, and I want to point out something about that pre-application meeting. It lays out all the issues that you have to deal with, with the Planned Development District, and it also has a catch-all provision for the city, that the city can bring up anything else that they want to require in that. But it specifically says in the ordinance that you need to bring it up at that time or don't bring it up again, because as a developer, we're spending lots of resources to make this thing happen. So, we had a plan, and this plan has been in each and every meeting, that on June 7th, the submission of the preliminary PDD would take place. We met that obligation, and we got that in. That put us on the agenda for the July 24th Planning Commission meeting, and it also, we also had the plan that if we get through the Planning Commission meeting for the preliminary PDD, that we would do a submission of the final PDD on August 8th. And that was totally the plan from day one, that we were going to work through that. And then, of course, August 19th, today, would be the city council meeting that would take place. September, because we submitted again on August 8th, would put us before the Planning Commission in September, and then October, the city council meeting, and that would be the final. And so, that's the plan that these developers, my team of people we're working with, and this booklet, wherever it's at, is a $30,000 booklet. We're talking about lots of resources that we put in to make this thing happen. So, on June 7th, going down through there, we did the preliminary submission, and then we got comments back from the city staff on July 2nd and 3rd. Those are in your documents as far as what we got back, specifically from Patrick, Dina, Adam, and a number of other organizations. So, we made a process to modify that, the actual application that we had submitted, and on July 9th, we had a meeting with a larger group to review the pre-application issue. And that included, sir, the fire department, the 26 feet that you were talking about. Lester and I specifically went over to the fire hall, met with the fire department people for both alleys, et cetera, to make sure that that happened. And then, on July 23rd, I put up the notice for the city council meeting, and that's the photograph that you have in your packet, and you'll notice that it also includes the hearing that was taking place the next day. And on there is the preliminary PDD Planned Development District that would be taking place. And so, that took place on July 24th. We, in fact, did meet with the Planning Commission. You have the staff agenda that would be in there. And then, on the 29th, which is five days later, we met again with a follow-up meeting for the final submission that was going to take place on August 8th. So, we immediately, the next Monday, the Planning Commission meeting was on a Wednesday, on the next Monday, we met with the staff again and worked through that. And I asked some specific questions at that meeting as far as the lots, when we would be dealing with this. On July 31st, I got word from Ryan that there was notified of a good news meeting. So, I wasn't certain what that was, but I met with him and Patrick on August 2nd and found out there was a big change in the process at that point. So, that plan that is up there, that we had been working on since April, got scrapped and thrown out the window. And what was now going to take place was not a preliminary and a final, and then a final, excuse me, a preliminary, preliminary, both Planning Commission and also the city council, and then go back into a final and a final. But now, we are going to change the process, and it's what you are tonight. And I can tell you, if you read through the, what took place at the Planning Commission meeting, that is not what's taking place tonight. Right now, we're talking about a first reading and a second reading, which we anticipate will be September 3rd. That was not what the Planning Commission thought it was. What they thought was, they were going to get another bite at this apple, that it was going to be a preliminary, and then we go into a final in September, and we met the August 8 deadline, and then we roll into there. And so, the new plan is no August 8 deadline. This occurred to us on August 7th, which is, excuse me, August 2nd, which is 17 days ago, very recently. No final PDD required for review by the Planning Commission, so that was axed. And the first and second reading by the city council didn't sound too bad. I walked out of that meeting thinking, okay, this is a good news meeting. And we had a plan between Ryan and Patrick and myself, that on September 6th, we would go ahead and start the subdivision process. And so, that was the deadline to get us on the October agenda, which put us on the November agenda for the council, and so, that was the plan. On August 8th, the August 5th letter was not received by me on August 5th. It was received by me on August 8th, which we're talking now 11 days ago, and a lot less business days than that. And we're trying to respond to that, and there is a disagreement. I do not submit to it, and the reason is this, that on August 14th, I got an email from your city attorney that the August 2nd plan is not valid. So, that new plan that happened on August 7th, 2nd, is no longer valid as well, that the September 6 deadline, she said was not going to be present with that, and we basically changed the whole thing again. And we feel like we've been chasing our tails. We get documents from the city, and immediately, those things change. And I can, I gave you those documents, so you can review that. So, the August 5th letter that actually received August 8th has a number of new items in there that the Planning Commission never dealt with. And not only that, they did a process that was in error, and the city attorney was sitting there, Patrick was sitting there. These are all good people with goodwill. I do not deny that, but they led the Planning Commission through a project or a process that is not what is being pursued at this point. And it's caused nothing but frustration on our end, because I keep having staff meetings with my people. I spend money and tell them we've got this particular deadline, and then it gets changed again. And at the last of it, on Friday of last week, today's Monday, the city attorney sent specifically a letter, email to my attorney, who then referred it to me, and basically laid out that we're having problems with making, we're trying to make this work for Phil, but it's becoming, he's got to sit down with us, et cetera, and make this happen. And what should have happened, folks, is in April, the city attorney and whoever else should have been sitting down, I don't care if this is a new PDD or not, I agree that it's difficult, but we should have been defined the whole process from that point. And what has happened is that come after the Planning Commission, there has been numerous changes, including things that we have to deal with come August 2nd. Now, I can tell you that August 2nd email, or excuse me, August 5th, we have dealt with it, and Lester can come up and tell you that everything has been done on that, and we've done it with each and every time, we have tried to fulfill the city, but the rules keep changing and the process keeps changing in a significant way. And right now, the only thing that we're supposed to do is myself and the attorney and Ryan and my attorney are supposed to sit down and come up with a new process that would be different than Pro Tem Mayor Smith's request, just because of this. And we are not supposed to be doing with a moving target, especially we've got something that is as significant to Canyon City as this particular project, $7.6 million investment, everything else, and it has been nothing but a challenge on dealing with this. And again, you wanted to hear from a developer, you're hearing it at this point. Now, I think these people are people of goodwill, but the process is terrible, and it needs to be revised in a significant way, and I don't, quite frankly, I don't know what the next step is. I've received emails, et cetera. I know what I'm going to request tonight, which is expedited review. The PDD ordinance specifically says that we can do that, and I am specifically asking, because of these turns and changes that have been taking place, that we basically scrap what has happened before, and we put it on expedited review, and the council take it up and make it happen, as opposed to what the process is at this point. So I met with my team this morning. Specifically, we focused on, we're going to make that September 6 deadline if the council doesn't go for expedited review, and we make that happen. So do I like bringing this stuff up? I do not. I would absolutely prepare, be much more focused on making this thing happen, but the Planning Commission did not vote on what you guys are voting on tonight. They're voting on something else, and there are specific things, and I could refer to the documents. If you look on there, there was legal descriptions that were changed, there were changes with the bushes and stuff like that. It makes a reference, the Planning Commission had this contingency that they were doing as well. Well, the staff changed that contingency. The Planning Commission specifically approved with some contingencies that the staff would review things. The staff has added stuff onto that, and you can figure that out. I'm not wanting to do anything other than I reviewed this stuff in detail over the weekend to make sure that I had my act together before I made these statements in the public. And there are items that are on the August 5th document that the Planning Commission never saw and got changed after that, and specifically, the ordinance says, all that should have been up before us by May 16th. So I am 100% behind Canyon. I'm closing. I am 100% behind this project. I am going to do whatever it takes to make this thing successful for the investors who have put more than a million dollars in this to date, for the city council and the Canyon City, and I mean that specifically. I am a lifelong-termer here at Canyon City. I love it here, and I'm going to do what it takes. But this cannot drag out for another four months. We cannot go to December to have this thing approved, or we are going to lose Chris Cohen. He's going to go over to Florence, where it's a quicker kind of thing. Those jobs are going to evaporate. All the deals we put into play are now at risk, because we have a process that is going to take us till December, which started in April, to get those lots done. And it's easy. You know, there's a lot of details, but what are we trying to do here? We're trying to do a rezoning, and we're trying to create 13 lots and four lots and some condominiums, and that's a process. And right now in Canyon City, it takes eight months to get that done. And that is ridiculous, and it needs to change. And again, I say this as a person who absolutely loves Canyon City. I work with the staff. I'm hoping they're not going to hold it against me to bring this up, but it cannot take eight months to get something through that we all agree on. So that's what I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay. What we have, we have, the public hearing is open. There's two issues, and I would like to address Phil's at some later time, but we have to close. Any more comments from staff or from anyone else? Because I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 18, series of 2019, in the Scholastica Planned Development District.
This is our first reading.
This is the first reading. All right.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Gibbs, thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
One.
Mr. Meisner?
So we approve, hypothetically, we approve this motion tonight. When is the next reading to close out this portion of the matter?
September 6th.
Our next city council meeting.
Well, it's going to depend. So I guess I need some clarification. Patrick has put a motion in the staff report. Are you rejecting that motion?
No.
Okay. Because that motion contains that the items in the August 5th letter need to be satisfied. So I, because to clarify your, to answer your question, I'll get to it in just a second. So second reading can be on the 3rd or it can be on the 16th. Staff does not have a preference. So if the applicant requested the 16th, so if the applicant would like it on the 3rd, that's fine with us. If you have the motion with the August 5th language in it, nothing will be recorded, and the rezoning will not then become effective. That's the way the ordinance is currently drafted until it's recorded, until those items are satisfied. So your process will be done on the 3rd or the 16th, whatever date you choose for second reading, but those items, the actual ordinance and the PDD plan that's in your packet, the guide, will not be recorded until the items in the August 5th letter are satisfied. That's the way the motion that Patrick has in his staff report is set up.
Could you, would you like to address that? This is unusual, but go ahead.
Well, you need to reopen the public hearing if you're going to take more comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mine was just a point of clarification.
No, I'd have to reopen the public hearing. Can we do that?
Sure, you can reopen it.
Okay. Then I will reopen the public hearing.
Good man.
Now, now you may comment.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Lester Lamone. I'm the architect for the project. I do the August 5th memo from the planning office that everything on there has been satisfied. It has been completed, excuse me. So the only clarification I would need is, does that need to go back to staff prior to the next reading for their confirmation that everything has been completed?
Okay.
I'm just asking for that clarification.
Apparently, it has to be.
It needs to go back to staff for confirmation that the items have been addressed. It does not need to happen before second reading. What will happen is, once we get it and confirm that the items have been completed...
If that happens before second reading, of course, we will let you know if those items have been satisfied, and that condition will come off.
Does that retroactively go back to the Planning Commission, then?
Okay. Do you want me to address the Planning Commission issue? Okay. So Planning Commission did see this application. There may have been minor changes between Planning Commission and city council. I consider them minor, okay? And I've explained to you the issues with the process, and we're now on a different track. Now, if the applicant is concerned that Planning Commission did not see the application in front of you or wants Planning Commission to hear it again, we can start over, but staff recalibrated based upon the applicant's desire to keep it moving, and so we didn't take it back to Planning Commission. And I'm legally comfortable with that. They are a recommending body. They do not make final decisions. They did see the concept of the plan, and that's really what's on the table tonight, is the rezoning and the concept of what this presentation was about and what you've been presented with that. And they considered that, and that's, I'm comfortable with it from a legal standpoint. So.
We have no desire to go back in front of the Planning Commission prior to your approval, but we just want to make sure that there isn't going to be, as long as council, as long as council, as long as you're comfortable with council, we'll be comfortable. We just don't want to get into some weird space someplace, because something was skipped, so.
Okay. We, please.
I know it's frustrating, but I don't want any more staff changes from what you adopted. They did that last time with the Planning Commission. They weren't supposed to. That specifically was made, again, your ordinance specifically prevented that from happening, and if this is happening tonight, I want some assurances that the attorney isn't going to change things, that he's not going to change things, that's going to stay as you adopted. And as Lester indicated, we've already worked through all those issues for the August 5th letter. They're done with. We're ready to roll. I want to get a second reading on September 3rd, and the reason is, because I would assume I need to be on September 6th as far as the deadline to get back on the Planning Commission for the subdivision portion of this. If we go past September 6th, we're looking at October, November to move that back. So again, second reading would be on September 3rd in my request. I would prefer that we get an expedited review, though. The PDD ordinance allows for that. Thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
Do we have this August 5th letter?
Yes.
It's in the packet you gave us. It's in the packet you received from staff as well.
And is the August 5th letter the letter that potentially or presumably has additional items added to it?
It does.
Adam and Catherine, do you feel that this is complete, that there will be no more changes necessary, that we are good to go and moving forward?
Well, we have not seen any of the items in the August 5th letter, and I think I really need to clarify an issue that things are getting a little convoluted in the story that was told, and I think it's really important to remember, this is solely the rezoning and not any of the subdivisions. And so to say things might not change is only related to the rezone. There's been a lot of discussion about changing on the subdivision in the process, but this is only related to the rezone. But I haven't seen any of the items that are asked, requested in this memorandum, so I can't guarantee your, I'm not comfortable guaranteeing or promising anything. I just can't, not without seeing all these things that are done, so.
We were headed toward a zoning subdivision process from the very beginning, including all of the infrastructure and all of the engineering documents ready, which is what we're doing for August 6th, I mean, September 6th, excuse me. We were headed in that direction, and we will be complete in that deadline, but here we are, only at zoning. We still, she's right, we still have to go through subdivision. All the work has been completed, but we're standing before you tonight, only with zoning. So we were counseled to go zoning and then subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I have to clarify something else. Staff gave them the option of moving forward with the zoning, because we were, the applicant indicated that he wanted to sell off the planning areas as soon as the zoning was done. That would have taken an administrative subdivision exemption step without going to any more public processes. So staff said, you have this slightly faster route, because you don't have all your subdivision stuff in line yet, so if you want to just separate out the zoning, you can go that route. It was an option. The applicant dictates the process he takes. Staff does not dictate that. He was given an option. He chose it, and that is where he is today. I just want to clarify that. There's lots of ways to skin this cat, and the applicant has to choose the right way for him.
Pardon?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, we're getting a little long here, but go ahead.
But I want to clarify, again, your ordinance specifically, this is your process, city council, and it wasn't laid out to us exactly what the process was by the May 16th meeting, and we have always told from day one that to make this work, we've got to get through this process as fast as we can, so we can sell off the lots, we can recoup the assets, we can get more investment here and take place. And Catherine, with great respect, has not been involved in any of the meetings that we have participated in. She came in after the Planning Commission meeting, as far as I can tell, and started changing the process, and in a significant way. And this has cost us money. It's cost us time. It's cost us lots of resources, and we may lose some of the potential sales that we have as a result of that. She should have been involved since April, and there should have been a clean process from the city of Canyon City as far as what was going to take place and how we navigate that. Every meeting, I've communicated, this is our goal, this is what we're trying to do, and again, staff has worked well with us. There's no problem with that, but things got muddled since the Planning Commission meeting in a very significant way.
Questions of council, Mr. Hammack?
Thank you. That is a question for the developer. You have read the draft ordinance.
I have, a number of times.
And from your perspective, is there any defects or flaws in that ordinance?
You know, I appreciate that more than any question tonight, because I want to tell you that I am not, I'm wanting to be part of the solution here. And I'm hoping that the staff has been taking notes on changes that could make place with the PDD and get that back to you. The PUDD, or PUD, I know that they just recently went through that and made some changes. Again, I'm viewing these people as good, professional people, and I've said that at numerous meetings, and there are significant changes, though, that need to be made to that PDD ordinance, and I'm happy to be participating as part of the solution to make some changes with that.
Thank you for that. I'm not asking about our PDD ordinance, which is in the future for us.
Yeah.
Talking about the ordinance that we have in front of us tonight, that, for zoning.
Right. So the option is that we could do something with, what I'm concerned about is, we're going to get September 3rd approval on the second reading. We're going to submit something on September the 6th, and come that, then we're 45 days then from a Planning Commission meeting, which occurs in October, and then the city council meeting in November. And that's the fastest track, and so from April to November, you can do the math, that's how long the process takes to make that happen. Many of my people, our people, are employed with other projects that are occurring in Fremont County, and specifically the city of Florence, who specifically had a Planning Commission on one Thursday night. On Tuesday, they had the city council meeting and changed the emergency ordinance, and in five days, they got done what's going to take us eight months. And that's something that, if Canyon City is going to be a player in the future, you've got to shorten this timeframe in a significant way. So I would prefer to get expedited review. We shoot for September whatever, to put the whole thing on there. As Lester talked about, we are completely ready for the subdivision process, we're completely ready for the zoning process. The ordinance itself allows for that bundling to take place and to move this thing forward. And the attorney hasn't got it quite correct as far as what happened in those particular meetings. She wasn't there. I was through every meeting, and I would have a difference of viewpoint as far as how that all transpired. My one thing I would leave is, what I'm looking for is just the cleanest path, the clearest path, to get this done, because this is not the project. The project is doing the dorm, the project is doing Big Red, the project is doing this other stuff. Canyon City's got a role in it, but it's not the major role, and it shouldn't be the major role. We need to do zoning, we need to make some lots, and there's lots of details with that, but the project is something different than that.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Land, I want to thank you for, in essence, being our guinea pig of going through the PDD. It's the first time that it's been done in over 15 years. We have new staff doing it, and it has taken a lot of patience to go through it, and we realize that there are a lot of things that need to be fixed, and we appreciate your candid comments and willingness to be a part of the solution. Moving forward, obviously, we want to clean up the PD process, that's a whole different subject, but I would really like to see this expedite as much as we can and be accommodating to get this pushed through as quickly as we can. If that, and I'm not sure the specifics of the codes, but if we can move at Planning Commission meetings, if we can move up, have special city council meetings, let's just get it done and punch it out.
I concur with what Ms. Smith said. This is confusing to me. We just need to get this done. I mean, it's not rocket science. I don't think.
Well, okay. Then we're going to close the reopening of the public meeting, and you have a motion on the table to approve this ordinance.
Do we have to re-close the?
I did, I closed it. Thank you. And we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I wondered if we meant to, the motion to be what the staff had proposed, because that's not the motion before us, so I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're voting on.
It sounds like the list is satisfied. So the only thing is, could we move it up, move the date up to September 3rd, like he was asking for the second reading?
Fine with me.
So, Dolly, I think it was your motion.
Mm-hmm, so I need to reread this. I move to approve the ordinance number 18 series of 2019, rezoning certain property to the PDD zone, subject to the condition that prior to the recording of this ordinance and the PDD plan, the outstanding items contained in staff's letter dated August 5th and attached to this staff report as Exhibit B have been resolved. And set the second reading, this says September 16th, but I would like to see it September 3rd of 2019.
I was the second, I'll go long.
Second? Ms. Smith, did you have a comment?
I just want to have a final comment, if that's okay? And I don't want to get too, I don't want this meeting to be let down with the frustrations going through this process. This is new for Canyon City. We are trying to become more business friendly, and I think that we are making those efforts, too. And we're sorry that you've had the frustrations we have. But I also want to extend appreciation to our staff for being those, as you said repeatedly, those good people that have really goodwill and good intentions. And you've worked really hard on this as well to make it go through. And I've heard many compliments throughout the process, and I want to thank you for that. But I also want to get us back to the, kind of that good news meeting part of it, that this is really good news of the rezoning. I'm really excited. Really, when it started four years ago, when we very first got in city council, St. Scholastica was dilapidated. It had weeds up to your head, it was being vandalized, squatters were in there. It was so contaminated that it was a health hazard. And the neighbors were in uproar about it and coming to us so mad that the city hadn't been doing anything to help alleviate these horrible problems. And so we did step up, and we started to do some more code enforcement. And for the first time, we went to the owner and said, you need to put a fence up to keep vandals out of the building, and you need to cut down the weeds. And he was living in Europe, and he really didn't care what was happening to that property. But now that city was starting to be a rub to his life, he quickly sold it to somebody who cared. And now it's in the hands of Phil Lund, and it's getting revitalized, it's getting taken care of. Then this time, the neighbors aren't even here at all. But that's because good things are happening. And the property's being revitalized, it's being respected for its history, and it's going to be providing some attainable housing and some incredible jobs for our citizens and also allowing open space. And I really like the plan a lot, and it's really good for us. So this is a good news meeting, and I really want us to end on a good note of celebration for this rezoning, for St. Scholastica, and praise all who've been involved in that process.
Thank you. Okay, does everybody understand the motion that was out and has been seconded? We're done with discussion on this. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, does everybody understand what's going to go on here? You're going to bring it to the September the 3rd. What will that mean?
September 3rd will be second reading of the ordinance. We can, to the extent that we get information between now and that date as to the items on that August 5th memo confirm that they've been complied with. And if they have, if you approve it at second reading, at that point, the ordinance will be recorded and the zoning will be in effect.
Okay.
All right, well, let's get that done.
Well, I would like you to keep us in the loop on how things are going, both of you. And I mean the mayor and council, because I want this to occur on this 3rd. We want this done.
But it's more than that. It's not just the rezoning, it's the subdivision process that we really need to expedite as well.
But the rezoning has to come first, then their subdivision will occur from there. And we can expedite that, too.
Catherine, are we allowed to be kept in the loop on everything?
No, not outside the public meeting. You're only allowed to hear about it in this meeting. You can't have, while I prefer you not have ex parte communications with the applicant regarding any applications that are coming before city council.
Well, but we can know whether things are going well or not. I think that's the key. You know, trying to keep that from council is just absurd.
Well, but we don't want to mess up anything.
I'm not saying to mess it up. I want to know if the process is going, if there's any, I don't want to know what those problems are. But I want to know if there's any problems. It's just irritating. We've got to sit here and have this discussion. Let's move on, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for best corner minor subdivision. Would invite, you going to do that, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our second item on the agenda, our second public hearing this evening, is a request by J.D. Kraus and Ty Shepherd for approval of a minor subdivision at 3110 East Main Street. Subject property is located at the southeast corner of Steinmeier Avenue in East Maine. It was platted in 2018 by subdivision exemption plat to create two lots, one of which was developed as the new location for Jewett's Liquors. The balance of the area exists as one lot, which is 1.86 acres, or 81,092 square feet in total area. At the time of construction for Jewett's Liquors, grading operations, utility installation, and construction of a shared series of internal drivelines were completed. The unbuilt portion of the property retains a C general commercial zoning district. The property is surrounded on three sides, to the east, north, and west, by existing commercial zoning. And to the south, it is bordered by an R3 high-density residential zoning, although the neighborhood, the neighboring property to the south contains single-family residential dwelling units. As previously stated, the unbuilt portions of the property retain a C general commercial district zoning, which requires a minimum lot size of 5,280 square feet. The lots proposed within this subdivision will range from 40,000 square feet to 41,092. The proposal intends to create just two lots. Normally, this would be the subject of a subdivision exemption plat. However, Title 16 specifies that from the date a subdivision exemption plat is recorded, no further subdivision by exemption plat can be undertaken for a period of five years. In this case, that would prohibit another subdivision exemption plat at this location until 2023. This is why the applicants have proposed a minor subdivision. Both these lots will take access from a shared internal driveway that goes through the site, connecting East Main Street to Steinmeier Avenue. This access solution was approved by CDOT, and that approval prohibits any access from these proposed lots directly to either Steinmeier or East Maine. This internal driveline was originally constructed to provide access to Jewett's, but was intended to serve all three of the adjoining lots. Now, in order to qualify as a minor subdivision under the city of Canyon City's regulations, the proposed subdivision must meet the following criteria. Parcel subject to the subdivision request is not more than 10 acres in size or will create fewer than five lots. The best corner minor subdivision is 1.86 acres and will only create two lots. The resulting lots meet both minimum lot area and minimum lot width along street frontage. Within the C commercial zone district, these minimums are 5,280 square feet and 44 feet in width at the street edge. The best corner minor subdivision exceeds these minimum area and width requirements for both lots. All lots must access a public right-of-way, and it cannot be a right-of-way being created with this subdivision. Now, the internal drive aisle that will provide access to all of these lots, which then accesses both Steinmeier Avenue and East Main Street, satisfies this requirement. No new street construction is necessary or proposed. Now, all lots must also be served with utilities, including water, sanitary sewer, electric, and natural gas. The utilities exist around both lots, and utility service providers have indicated they will be able to provide services to both lots. Staff therefore finds that the proposed best corner minor subdivision meets the criteria for minor subdivision approval. Staff also finds that the proposed subdivision and commercial lots will be consistent with the character of the East Main Street corridor. On all three sides, there is existing commercial zoning and existing retail functions to the east and north of the two proposed lots. The high residential density zoning to the south was likely established so as to service a transitional zoning to lower-density residential neighborhoods further south along Steinmeier Avenue. Staff therefore finds that the establishment of these two lots by minor subdivision not only gets around the five-year subdivision exemption prohibition, but creates two lots for commercial uses appropriate for this area of Canyon City. Planning Commission conducted this public hearing on this item on July 24th, 2019. And as a result of that hearing, staff and the planning commission recommend that city council approve the best corner minor subdivision request before you this evening. That would conclude the staff presentation. I don't know that the applicant is actually here this evening, but I'm always happy to answer any questions council may have on this project.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Any questions, council? Mr. Meisner?
Based on your diagram up there, where's the current Jewett's building?
It's on Lot B, right here.
It hasn't been built yet. That's, that's, that's an old area photograph.
I realize that, I know, I realize that, but I just didn't, I didn't realize that that lot east, west of Jewett's is that large.
Yeah, you can't make it any bigger or smaller. Sorry, getting batty. Anybody else would like to ask Patrick, talk to Patrick?
I just have a curious question. Do you know what the, what the potential use of that property or the interest in it is?
So we have had a couple of pre-applications with potential users, but we have not been advised as to who potentially will come forward with an actual site plan application yet.
Mr. Meisner?
I do have another question. Originally, there was an issue with water tap. That came off of Steinmeier, right?
Yes.
So now, we potentially are going to have Lot B with a water tap off of Steinmeier, and they're not on Steinmeier anymore, correct?
Jewett's address is on East Main Street. The water tap for Jewett's, I believe, came off of East Maine.
I think not. Did it, Adam? Okay.
Oh, no, I think we tapped it in from a street that wasn't dug up. Because at the time, it was already dug up. Or at the time, it had just been repaved.
I thought it came off Steinmeier, but Adam would.
I think it came off Steinmeier.
Remember that?
Before the subdivision and before the Jewett's project, there's an existing tap to Lot 1 off of Steinmeier. Jewett's made a new tap off of East Maine for there. So this, this project, they already have an existing tap to Lot 1. They'll make another one for Lot 2.
Okay. I just thought, I thought it came off of Steinmeier, so they didn't have to cut Main Street.
No, they did cut Main Street.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion that we approve the best corner minor subdivision?
Oh, I need to close the, I am going to close the public hearing at this time. Ms. Smith?
Can I now please make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
That we approve the best corner minor subdivision?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hammack, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Hearing and seeing, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay.
Thanks for all your hard work, Patrick.
I, uh... We're going to go to what's called a discussion. I would like if you kept it concise. Or my gavel is coming out. Thank you, Tammy Nordike. We would appreciate conciseness. And who are these gentlemen that are following you around?
I will let them introduce themselves to you.
Please do that, gentlemen.
Yes, my name is Jim Henkel with Henkel &amp; Company CPAs, and we perform the audit of the annual financial statements through the CAFRA, the consolidated annual financial report. And we are here to discuss very concisely the results of our audit procedures.
I'm Chris Parker, I'm a CPA, I work for Jim Henkel.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I would, I would ask if council is okay with us not doing the presentation out of respect for the time for our auditors. They need to travel back to Denver this evening and just have them present their findings and procedures to council.
That's fine with me, go right ahead.
Thank you.
All right, ready? Okay, thank you very much. We started our audit process by our interim procedures. Those can happen before or after year-end. Generally, it's before the staff have closed the books and prepared the accounting ledgers ready for audit. At that time, we do an analysis of the internal control structure of the accounting department, how accounting transactions are initiated and recorded and approved. Once we have received our understanding of those internal controls, we then do what we call test of controls, where we randomly select disbursement samples and payroll samples. And we walk those through the, the process of the accounting procedures to do two things. One is to determine our understanding of the internal controls is actually operating as explained to us. And two, we determine our ability to rely on those controls through the audit process of the annual financial statements. That process went very well. Through that process, we also will indicate whether or not there are any internal control material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Those are terms of art in our world. A significant deficiency is a design flaw in the internal control structure that would allow an accounting error, whether intentional or unintentional, to go through the process undetected. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that would result in a material misstatement of the annual financial statements. The result of our work and the interim procedures was that we did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. So that is what you want to hear. The design, as well as the execution of the internal accounting controls, is operating such that any errors that would occur would be found in the ordinary course of business. That turns us to the final field work. Once staff has completed the closing of the annual financial statements in the general ledger, we go in through what we call substantive testing, where we test the account balances, either the details of the account balances, or through analytic review procedures, we determine the accuracy of those account balances, whether they are balance sheet items such as accounts receivable, accounts payable, fixed assets, cash, or revenues and expenditure balances. We examine source documents such as invoices, communication from third parties, or information prepared and provided to us from staff. We also look at analytic review procedures such as one year to the next, to budget to actual, or a balance sheet item to an income statement item, such as looking at accounts receivables in relationship to revenues, accounts payables in relationship to expenditures, to arrive at what we are, in result is our audit opinion that is presented with the financial statements in the consolidated annual report. That audit report is an unmodified report, or in layman's term, is a clean opinion. It states that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and applied on a consistent basis with previous years. That is also what you want to hear. So all in all, our audit procedures, while thorough and exhaustive in some cases, prove that we had no internal control issues and that the financial statements are in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. So those two are, they're good results. Chris is going to describe to you a letter that we will be issuing. We actually issued it, staff has it. It is not necessarily a public document, but those charged with governance, which is you all, will receive a copy of the letter. Chris?
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate everybody. I'll make this very quick. Professional standards do require that we communicate to you certain findings if we encounter them. And if we don't encounter those findings, we're required to communicate those as well. So very quickly, I'm going to tell you that, as Jim mentioned, we did test internal controls. We looked at significant accounting policies. We noted no transactions the city entered into during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. We looked at accounting estimates. We looked for misstatements. We identified no misstatements as a result of our audit procedures. With respect to disagreements with management or difficulties with management, I'm pleased to note, we had no major disagreements, and we had no difficulties in dealing with management. As far as management consulting with other independent accountants, they could opinion shop. We care about that, we look for that. As far as we're aware of, to our knowledge, there was no consultation with other accountants. In conclusion, this information, as Jim has mentioned, is for the use of the city council. You will receive a copy of this required communication in next week or so. It's not a public document. Any questions for me?
Mr. Meisner, did you have a question? Okay, no, this is, go ahead.
I was just going to say, all in all, everything that we asked for, we were provided. We were not kept from anything, so we had free access in asking for supporting documentation and things like that. We would like to thank staff and the city. We realize that we are an interruption... to their daily required duties, and we do ask a lot of questions and ask for lots of documents. So, we had a tremendous amount of support and cooperation from staff, and we never felt like we were kept from anything throughout our audit procedures.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner, did you want to ask a question now?
I got to question some of these graphs.
Okay.
That's not part of this.
Well, but...
It is. They did a scaled-down version.
Sure.
On the first page, I'm still confused under... I'm sorry. Second page, where we talk about streets, we got a budget of $616,000, and in 2000... And these are more budget-related than they are audit-related. We're at $267,000. Does that... Is that making sense, that we spent less than half of the money, that we'd budgeted for streets?
So, in the 2018 budget, the chip seal project was initially budgeted under capital, and we reclassified it as an operating expense. And so, that's where you'll see that. You'll see that it's only $267,000 in actual, under the capital, for streets. The actual expenditure would have been accounted for in the public works area.
Isn't that 2.3%?
That is correct. And this does not include the 2A funds.
Right.
I don't know if this is part of the answer, but for the 2018, we had planned on building out more streets, but we only got filled.
I'm talking 2A.
Yeah.
I'm talking basic streets.
Just the chip seal projects?
Right. The $600,000 that we talk about continuing to...
Correct.
To meddle around with that money. And so, we did a fund transfer, if I recall, for that 600, for part of that?
Part of that, yes. We did do a resolution that reallocated it, yes. Yes, that moved it. That is correct. We did that earlier this year.
So, chip sealing is roughly $300,000?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you both for the thorough and rigorous process you did. That's really important to us, that we have that, and want to thank staff for being open and cooperative in all ways and every way. And Tammy, thank you for keeping Harry's legacy alive, of keeping the books and the reports clean and done to perfection.
No problem.
Okay. Anyone else on council would like to ask any of the... Okay. Well, I think we're done. Wow. Thank you.
Concise.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip home. Sorry you had such a long wait.
Oh, no problem at all. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time to come and make a presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to talk about Building Facade Improvement Grant, and which reminds me, who's married in Grant's tomb? Okay, never mind. Invite the acting city administrator to discuss this.
All right. So, Mayor, members of council, earlier this year, council authorized a fund transfer of $20,000 to a neighborhood services fund, partially, specifically set aside for a facade improvement type of program. This document in front of you is the mechanism behind that to kind of provide governance and the application for applying for that particular grant. So, it's up to you for a discussion, and let us know if you'd like us to proceed forward with this.
Mr. Meisner? Thank you. Ryan?
We doing one at a time?
What...
Questions?
Yeah, you may... Yes, go ahead.
My first question is, I'm confused as to why... I realize we've got calendar years, but it seems your project has to be completed by December 31st. Does that not complicate some construction projects?
It could. This is based on funding, but we're sure we can find a way to get around that.
I've got a concern about that. I've got more, but go around.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to make a comment in representation for the Downtown Business Alliance and the Chamber of Commerce. They are really excited for this facade grant opportunity. They really feel that this is a great way for them to be able to take care of some of the facade things in an affordable way. They also had received an independent donation from someone else who will help the businesses get their match funding, so it'll be like a match of a match of a match, if that makes sense. And I think that they are looking forward to utilizing some of this money.
If that were the case, why wasn't it used?
It hasn't been officially mandated that they could do it. Tonight's going to make that available, because right when we were getting started on this neighborhood services with the facade grant is when we had changes in administration, and we never followed through to completion.
But we're not voting on anything tonight, are we? We are voting on it.
You can vote to approve, absolutely.
Okay. Is this to the building owner or to the business, the tenant leasing the building?
It is designed for the building owner or the tenant with the building owner's approval.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
I'm confused about the sidewalk thing Adam left, so... We're talking about the sidewalks being part of the program, but aren't those... Isn't that city property to start with?
Well, we already actually have a sidewalk improvement program. I will take a look at that and see...
Says replacement enhancement of sidewalks adjacent to the building.
Yep.
I understand other hardscape, but...
Yeah, we can...
In the areas that we're talking about, those are city sidewalks anyways.
Yeah, we can remove that portion of it.
I just cannot accept the fact that we're going to require three bids, and we're going to take the lowest. That's a recipe for disaster.
Okay.
I mean, in my opinion.
Could be.
I mean, I think we need to have a program that's helping the businesses, but then to turn around and tell them how to work that whole process? I mean, they need to submit the project to us and us look at the project for the value of the project, and then us make a decision on that versus us telling them how to run their project. If they want one bid, whatever. And if the project has value to the downtown area, then fine, we approve it.
So, your recommendation or your suggestion is one bid is sufficient?
Why? You don't even need a bid. I mean, you submit a project for $10,000. We look at it and say, we're going to pay two. How you pay the rest, or whether you're over or under, is really... You're getting into the meats and potato, or whatever you call it, of the whole project. The point of the project is to improve downtown Main Street, whatever, and we're going to help do the cost for that, in my opinion.
So, any other?
I would like to see at least one bid, so that... I mean, the project is...
What if they have a family member that runs a business that can help them remodel, and they want to put that money towards...
Well, because that's all covered in here. You pay the materials.
Yeah. What I'm saying is...
You can't do that.
With this agreement, but what if it would help that business as well as another business? I agree with you, Jim. I think, however you decide to spend your money, if we can provide $2,000 to help them improve a facade, then that's $2,000, however way you want to spend it, to go towards a facade.
I mean, it's comparable to the fire thing. We don't have... Do we have these same things with the fire thing?
We do have multiple bids in the fire thing. In the fire grant.
Oh, that's higher odds. We're just talking $2,000. That's $50,000 match for the fire.
Which we haven't used, right?
Actually, I have an application.
Finally, after two years.
That's because things are finally moving.
Ms. Cochran?
At one point, we had discussed, and it was with the previous city administrator, so I don't know if this was ever talked about again since, but we had discussed, like, a core business hours in order to participate. Is that something that's still being...
That is a deal killer.
That's a deal breaker.
So, you know, the core business hours that I'm aware of were tied to marketing dollars and not tied to this particular grant. This grant is open to more than just the downtown businesses. This is basically any commercial business retail.
Oh, it's not strictly downtown. Okay.
Right. And you can see the facade 24 hours a day. Okay. Mr. Hammack?
Hey, yeah, I'd like to second Mr. Meisner's comments. I think, I don't think the city needs to evaluate the... How the money is spent, whether it's spent effectively or somewhat wastefully. You know, the issue is the improvement, and if the owner's willing to put in 50% or more into the improvement, I think that that's, on its face, what the city needs to look at. Is the improvement good for the district?
So, would it be okay with council if we changed it to one estimate rather than bid? So that they're submitting something that we know...
Sure, sure.
So, you know, they've done their homework. They know what they're getting into and that it's going to be feasible for them to actually accomplish.
But I do have a question. The... So, in the introductory paragraph, so it is, we are providing up to $2,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. It wasn't real clear to me in reading that sentence that that's what it was. I read it one way that that could be up to a $2,000 project, and we would fund 50%, but...
Yeah, we will... Yeah, we'll fund up to 2,000. We'll fund 50% or up to $2,000.
Whichever's...
Whichever is greater?
Greater, lesser?
Lesser.
Oh, lesser? Okay.
Well, what...
Yeah, because we're...
It's too late to figure that out.
We still have to approve it, so...
We've had too much cold medicine.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So, it says in here on the first page, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 bullets down, if the applicant is the tenant or the improvements are tenant-specific, proof of existing tenancy for the past two years at the same location will be required. I don't quite agree with that, because so many businesses will change location even though they've been in business for more than two years? Is there a way that we can reword that to say if they've been in business for at least two years within city limits, and they're moving and renovating this building, it might be more cost-effective to use the grant as they're renovating, rather than wait two years and pull in a whole other crew out, spend more money?
Well, what's the justification? I have the same question. What's the justification or reasoning behind the two-year thing?
If they have, if they've been in business for two years.
I think it's, you know, similar to what Ms. Gonzalez is saying, is, you know, we do have a lot of turnover in stores and businesses, and, you know, we want to make sure that some of that money is going and it's going to be utilized for the long term and not necessarily for somebody who might only be in business for three or six months.
Which I do agree with, but if they've been in business and they've established a business and they're expanding to a newer, bigger, better place?
No, I can see that, and I think we can make that adjustment.
Yeah, because if you don't stay, we still have the facade fixed. Okay. Let's see. I'm Frank. Ms. Haques?
My question is, because we only got $20,000, what's the application procedure and how are we going to notify the business owners, the tenants and all in these places with regards to a starting date and a ending date to apply for this money that we're providing for?
We will use social media, use the paper to get the word out, and let everybody know the program is active, and as well as the other meetings and groups that we attend on a regular basis, Chamber of Commerce, Merchants Association, Word of Mouth.
Well, but like all our other projects, are we going to have a, you know, an opening date and a closing date? That's what I'm looking at.
I think we'll open it, and then it'll be a first-come, first-served type of situation.
Never mind. You just answered my question.
Mr. Meisner?
On page 2 of the agreement, or I guess you'd call it an application, I'm sorry. At the top, I may be misreading this. At the top, it says three written bids for the same scope of work. I realize we're talking about maybe taking this out, but then down in the application requirements, it says two bids. Is that a...
It's a typo.
Just take them both out, and it'll fix everything.
He will do our bidding. Okay. Ms. Cochran, did you get your question answered?
It already answered.
Okay. Any other questions?
We're at a thumbs up or thumbs down.
We're at a vote. I would entertain with... Do you want to go ahead and vote on it now, or you see until we get the changes?
I would like to see... There's too much vagueness here. We need a little more substance.
Is it a two reading vote? No, it's just a one.
I can bring it back September 3rd.
Yeah, just bring it back as quickly as possible, and...
I think you could go ahead. I believe there's enough here that council is going to agree with it. If you wish to start it pretty quickly, taking it to the public, I think you could, even though we're just lacking the vote on the 3rd, so...
Clean up the mess.
Anything else? Breakfast, maybe, or... All right. We are now adjourned. Thank you.